We're going to call this meeting, this concurrent meeting of the Special Joint Hayward Geological Hazard Abatement District Board of Directors and City Council to order. If I could ask people to please take their seats or, you know, we're going to start the meeting. I'm going to call the meeting to order, and I will ask Councilmember Wahab to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Mr. Hall.
Yes, Mayor, good evening. Members Sermanio, Member Marquez.
Present.
Member Mendel.
Here.
Member Lamnan.
Here.
Member Wahab.
Here.
Member Salinas.
Mayor and Chair Holliday.
Here.
Thank you.
So, this part of the meeting is the Hayward Geological Hazard Abatement District Board Meeting. We have a consent calendar for that meeting, Items One and Two. So, do I hear a motion to approve the cons... Oh, and Councilmember Marquez, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to ask staff to please clarify in our minutes from the February 26 meeting that Item Number One, the notes indicate that Board Member Lamnan made the motion and it was seconded by me. I just want to make sure that it's captured accurately. These were actually two separate votes, so that's accurate for the first resolution, but for the second resolution, I was actually the one that made the motion and Councilmember Lamnan seconded it. So if we could just make that correction, I'm okay with moving that we adopt the minutes.
Okay, we'll be happy to do that.
Thank you.
All right. So maybe we will take these separately then. That was Item Number Two. So, do I have a motion for Item Number One?
No.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Marquez, seconded by Councilmember Lamnan. Is there anyone opposed to that approving Item Number One? Seeing no one, that item passes. I was not present for the February 26 meeting, so I will abstain from this vote. So, is there a motion?
The...I would just like to make a correction on the February 26 meeting as well.
Okay.
Primarily during the referral period, I believe that the referral for the rent increase fees...okay, thank you, appreciate it. There's two Number Ones.
This is the GAD.
Yes, yeah, this is right.
I'll move Item Number Two with the corrections that I indicated earlier.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone...I will abstain from voting on this item, but does anyone else obje...
Everyone else?
It was moved again by Councilmember Marquez, seconded by Councilmember Lamnan, and with six votes in favor and one abstention. All right. So now we'll move on to the public hearing item for the GAD agenda, and that is to adopt a resolution to declare the GAD's intent to order an assessment for the Ersted property and set a public hearing 45 days after notice is provided to consider the proposed assessment and any protests there, too. So I think that I will turn this over to our GAD manager. Sorry, your name is escaping me at the moment, but please introduce yourself. I will get to know it sooner or later and proceed with this item.
Thank you, Chair Holliday. My name is Eric Harrell, and I'm here with Amara Morrison, the GAD attorney, and we're here tonight representing the Hayward GAD. Before the board tonight is a continuation of the annexation process of the Ersted property into the Hayward GAD. The board is being asked to consider approval of the engineer's report and declare an intent to order an assessment for the Ersted property. As provided in the engineer's report, an annual assessment of $923 per residence has been proposed to fund the GAD activities as described in the adopted Ersted Plan of Control. This will not affect the assessment previously adopted for the reserve development. A ballot...if approved, a ballot will be sent to the sole property owner within the Ersted parcel to vote on the proposed assessment under the requirements of Prop. 218. On May 7, 2019, the board probably asked me to tabulate the ballot, and if there's no majority protest, to authorize the assessment. We are available for any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions from council on this? I do not see that there are any questions from council. So, I will open the public hearing, and I don't have any cards requesting to speak on this item. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one coming forward, we'll close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion from council or comment.
All right.
The staff recommendation has been moved by Councilmember Lamnan, seconded by Councilmember Mendel on the motion. And the motion passes with seven "aye" votes. And I believe that that then concludes the business of the Hayward Geological Hazard Abatement District Board of Directors meeting. And so, we do thank you very much for your...for coming and representing the GAD here tonight, and we'll see you whenever the next time is that we need to take action.
We'll see you on May 7.
May 2?
7.
7th? Okay, May 7th. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to move on now to our closed session announcement from our city attorney. First of all, I will start with that. On Item Number One, performance evaluation, city clerk, as I've noted, that this is the time of year when the council is reviewing its direct reports, and this was...we are working on the city manager...the city clerk at the moment. So, we did meet in closed session and took no reportable action. So, Mr. Lawson on Items Two and Three.
The closed session, Items Two and Three were discussed by council. Number Two is the council's conference with property negotiators regarding the property listed in the closed session agenda. Council took no reportable action. Under Number Three, the council discussed two cases of anticipated litigation and took no reportable action. Mayor, the...at the last meeting, the council did agendize the lawsuit filed by the Gonzalez family. There was a brief report out, but I'll make some additional comments in a few minutes.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions about that? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to a presentation that we have this evening, and it is...it is American Red Cross Month. And so, whereas the American Red Cross has touched many lives in the city of Hayward as well as across the country and around the world, and during American Red Cross Month, we thank those who contribute to the mission of the Red Cross, whether through time, money, or blood in many cases. We invite others to support the Red Cross in helping people in need, in need down the street, across the country, and around the world. Whereas the American Red Cross is synonymous with helping people and has been doing so for more than 130 years, throughout the past year, the American Red Cross launched hundreds of disaster relief operations in the United States to help people affected by fires, floods, hurricanes, and tornadoes. And whereas in the city of Hayward, the American Red Cross Bay Area Chapter works tirelessly through its nearly 1,500 volunteers to provide support when disaster strikes, when someone needs life-saving blood, or the comfort of a helping hand. It provides 24-hour support to members of the military, veterans, and their families, and provides training in CPR, aquatic safety, and first aid. Whereas in the past year, the American Red Cross Bay Area Chapter helped more than 1,828 families with temporary housing, clothing, food, and mental health counseling during 838 local emergencies. The chapter trained more than 86,843 people in life-saving CPR, first aid, water safety, and preparedness education. It provided emergency communications, counseling, financial assistance, and a caring presence to more than 912 local military families. The chapter supported many Bay Area hospitals, providing them with nearly 75,428 units of red cells, platelets, and plasma to patients in need. And whereas through the Pillowcase Project and the Home Fires Campaign, 14,329 local individuals and families received fire prevention training, supplies, and/or smoke alarms. And whereas for nearly 100 years, United States presidents have called on the American people to support the Red Cross and its humanitarian mission, our community depends on the American Red Cross, and because it is not a government agency, the Red Cross depends on support from the public to continue its humanitarian work. This is especially important in these challenging economic times, and I would say challenging times of disaster as well, which impact the Red Cross and the many people in our community and across the nation. And so therefore, I now, as the mayor of the city of Hayward, and on behalf of our entire city council and city operations, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2019 as American Red Cross Month in the city of Hayward, and I encourage all residents to support this organization and its noble humanitarian mission. And I believe we have...I was told we would have...I'm sorry.
Karen, Karen, Michael couldn't make it.
Right. How about James Leeper?
James isn't here either, but you got the local me.
All right. So why don't you introduce yourself, and meanwhile, I'll come down with this proclamation. And I think that we should actually give the American Red Cross a round of applause.
You gave all my thunder. I was coached on this, so I just want to thank the city and all the council members, the mayor, and all the staff that worked on this, that American Red Cross is really alive and living in Alameda County. This is my third year of having the pleasure and honor of receiving this for the American Red Cross of Alameda. We have a lot of services, as you mentioned, the blood, the disaster relief. We've worked on fires in Hayward, and we can do more with the city of Hayward. We can do shelter fundamentals, we can do training, we can do shelter worker, and we're hoping to consider that...continue that relationship. So again, I'm just here very quick. You covered everything very well, and I want to say thank you from the American Red Cross of Alameda County.
Just a few of us this time. I hope everyone will remember that part about they do depend on our donations to do this work, and you never know when your community is going to be the one that needs that, so...
The POA.
So, we're going to move on now to our...the item of legislative business that was held over from a week ago, or, well, actually, two weeks ago, our last meeting, and that is the introduction of the Hayward Community Foundation concept process, and authorization for the city manager to establish an affiliate fund with the East Bay Community Foundation and create the Hayward Community Foundation. And we'll start with a report from city manager McAdoo.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'm very excited to bring this forward this evening to the council. This has been about a year in the making, this concept and consideration. I had the opportunity to visit and to hear from representatives of the Greater Kansas City Community Foundation, and saw an opportunity to replicate a model that they utilize to help, one, our nonprofit and 501(c)(3) community, but then also as an outlet for the cannabis community benefit money. And so, our management analyst, John Stefanski, is going to talk through the concept. We also have Jerry Boomgarten, who is here from the East Bay Community Foundation, to answer questions. The goal of this item tonight is really the Hayward Community Foundation as an affiliate fund of the East Bay Community Foundation. It would basically create an umbrella organization that would allow our nonprofits to leverage the administrative resources of the East Bay Community Foundation so that they can devote more of their resources to the actual grant-making that each fund and foundation is working to do. So I think there's a lot of benefit to the community, and then also this Hayward Community Foundation would have a...an ability to direct the cannabis community benefit funds in a more targeted way instead of the one-off process and proposals that had come in with the initial cannabis application. So with that, I will turn it over to John to do the PowerPoint presentation.
Thank you very much, Kelly, and good evening, Mayor and council. So the item before the council this evening is the overview of the Hayward Community Foundation concept and formation process. Staff's recommended action for this item is to authorize the city manager to establish an affiliate fund with the East Bay Community Foundation to create the Hayward Community Foundation. And again, with us this evening is Jerry Boomgarten, who is the Managing Director of Donor Services and Senior Development Officer with the East Bay Community Foundation. So, community foundations are nonprofit organizations that utilize philanthropic contributions and grants to fund or provide and support local communities and their local nonprofit organizations. They are traditionally funded through individual contributions; the quests are through corporate and foundation-based grant-making. The value add for these entities is that they provide grants to the community as well as the opportunity for other nonprofits to have their funds managed in a larger pool while also gaining access to knowledge and networks to help them achieve their individual missions. Through general economies of scale, other nonprofits could see their operating and administrative overhead costs drop through the creation of individual funds to support each specific So, as Kelly mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, why a Hayward Community Foundation? As a component of the commercial cannabis permitting program, the city council required would-be applicants and permit awardees to articulate the community benefits that they would provide for the community. Cash payments to local area nonprofits is one of the number-one articulated community benefits, but however leaving this distribution of donations up to the discretion of individual cannabis operators may not be in the best interest of the community as they may direct funds to nonprofit organizations that may not address the most pressing needs of the community. Additionally, area nonprofit organizations need support as well, and a community foundation would help those entities because, again, as I mentioned, the administrative support and general economies of scale. So, establishing a community foundation is a labor-intensive endeavor, one that requires specialized knowledge in fundraising, grant-making, and nonprofit 501(c)(3) financial regulations and reporting requirements. To assist in the formation of the Hayward Community Foundation, staff recommends pursuing a conservative approach to ensure that the foundation will successfully launch. This approach consists of developing a community affiliate fund with the East Bay Community Foundation. It's a turnkey option that does not require hiring specialized staff and gives the nascent Hayward Community Foundation access to existing staffing and intellectual resources of the East Bay Community Foundation. This is a model that has worked for other East Bay communities such as the city of Richmond with the Richmond Community Foundation, the Berkeley Community Fund, and the Rodeo Crockett Community Foundation, so we would not be the first to take this step. So the proposed community affiliate agreement provides the Hayward Community Foundation with the ability to create one or more funds to finance charitable activities within the city. The East Bay Community Foundation will assist the new foundation with a variety of program services that provide a framework to evaluate community needs, grant-making policies and procedures. They'll help process payments and help track or assist in the grants made by the foundation. The East Bay Community Foundation will also hold, manage, invest, and reinvest the assets in the fund for a designated fee. The Hayward Community Foundation would appoint a distribution committee to consult and advise and make recommendations for the distribution...for distributions from the foundation's various funds. When the distribution committee is confident that the Hayward Community Foundation can then sustain itself on its own, they may elect to transfer assets out of the East Bay Community Foundation into an independent...independently standing Hayward Community Foundation. Local Hayward entities could then create an agreement with the Hayward Community Foundation and the East Bay Community Foundation to establish agency funds that operate under the Hayward Community Foundation. And so with that, myself and Jerry are here to answer any questions that the council may have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council on this? Okay, I just...you know, I had a couple. I wanted...oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Marquez. Excuse me, I would like to ask that members of the audience remain quiet while this council is conducting its business. You know, we try to be...we try to be polite and listen to when we have public speakers, and I think I would expect the same courtesy from all of you. So Councilmember Marquez, did you have some questions? Yes, thank you.
I do. So thank you for the report. I'm sorry that we had to table this, so thank you for coming back. My question is regarding the committee making recommendations to distribute the funds. Mainly what I want to ask is, was there any consideration, or could we still look at...we already have the Community Services Commission that reviews applicants. We always have a need that exceeds the funding available through the general fund and CDBG funding. So my question is, was there any consideration to look at those recommendations to align it with, we already know the need in the community, and not reinvent the will, so to speak?
And I think we'll come back to the council with the composition of the distribution committee. I think there's a number of different ways that we could format that. It could be the council budget and finance committee that serves as the distribu...I mean, there's a lot of different ways that we could do it, and then also taking into consideration the Community Service Commission recommendations as well.
Okay, thank you. So there'd be opportunity, despite of what we approved tonight, to formulate that in the future?
Yes, we'll still have...there's still that. This is just the formal agreement, and then the implementation of it will come back to the council for further conversation.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. That was one of my questions. And the other one is, there's mention of at some point in the fund...the fund becomes strong enough to then separate and stand on its own, and do we have any idea what that point might be, or, you know, how do you judge that?
I think it's by assets. Usually, if you have a certain level of assets held, that that then can support its own staff and its own investment staff. My suspicion is that won't be for some period of time. So typically, foundations that stand on their own, you know, have the $10 to $20 million endowment range, but I could also ask Jerry if she has any sense of when foundations typically spin off from the affiliate agreements.
Hi, thanks for the consideration of the East Bay Community Foundation. So it really is dependent, like Kelly said, on being able to staff the folks, having enough assets to staff a community foundation. So all the tenants of that would be grants administration, finance administration, and any of the other, mostly legal considerations.
All right. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll open public comment on this item. Is there anyone who would like to...I don't have any cards requesting to speak on this item. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this item? Would you like to speak on this item about the Hayward Community Foundation?
Yes.
Okay, please come forward and state your name. I would ask people to please give her the courtesy of listening.
My name is Carla Gonzalez. I'm kind of curious, this is funds for the community, right? So are we using any of these funds for mental health? Are we using any of these funds to train your officers? I don't think I heard anything about any of those trainings, but wouldn't that help your community? So it is the topic. You might not like the topic that I brought up.
Yes, thank you, it is.
But it is the topic.
Ask the city manager to respond to that.
Sure. We haven't...there hasn't been an identified source or target for the funds yet. That's something that will be determined in the future.
So you said there wasn't an identified source, so you don't think your community needs any more training?
That's not what I said.
Or mental health?
That isn't the subject. That kind of training would be under the city budget. It would not be under this community fund.
This is for...
The community fund could, though, be used to help nonprofit...to contribute to nonprofit organizations that provided mental health training in general, so...but no, any training of our personnel would come out, and I do understand why you're asking about this, and yes, that would come out of our city budget.
So when would that ever be on your agenda?
When we talk about the budget, which is coming up very soon in April and May.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one coming forward, I'm going to close public comment on this item and entertain council comments, or Councilmember Mendel.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just want to thank the city manager for identifying this idea and bringing it back to us. I think it's a great one. I'm pleased with the implementation plan, and I'm happy to move the staff recommendation.
All right. Staff recommendation has been moved by Councilmember Mendel, seconded by Councilmember Sermanio And the motion passes with seven "aye" votes. Thank you. Okay, so now I'm going to ask...we're going to move on to our public comments part of our meeting, but first I'm going to ask, I think our city attorney, Mr. Lawson, has a public comment to make.
This is a public statement of my advice and direction to the mayor and council and the city staff. Last month, the Gonzalez family filed a federal lawsuit against the city. The title is the letters AAG versus the city of Hayward. The city's not been served with the lawsuit, but it has been filed. In the filing of the lawsuit, it precludes any further conversation in this council chamber by way of comments from the mayor council or city staff. It is not clear to me why the family made the strategic decision to file the lawsuit now, but having done so, and I do respect the family's legal counsel, I've worked...we've worked...
Where is the release?
I'm going to finish. I've worked with the family's legal counsel for many years, and I respect them. I've worked with them to allow the family to have an early viewing of the video privately. But having made that decision, it does not allow the mayor and council to discuss it further in public. That's my advice, and that's my direction. The family has the right to request an independent investigation by the State Department of Justice and the Attorney General, and I'm sure your legal counsel is aware of that. There are...there are parallel investigations that are now underway. At the conclusion of those investigations, I can support an independent review. The mayor and council have acknowledged the loss. I acknowledge the loss. But with those comments, I will not have further comment. That is my direction to the mayor and council and the city staff. That is my direction to the mayor and council and the city staff.
You need to be taken off the street.
Sir, for law--
You need to be fired.
We're not safe out here.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lawson. And again, I would ask that you, that people who do not have the floor not be--
All of them will be with us next month. Mrs. Doran's last check, they're all collaborating with us next--
Our first speaker tonight under public comments is Mr. Jim Drake, and I hope that you'll have the courtesy of--
Jim, Jim.
--being heard.
Hard attacks today.
Good evening, Mayor Holliday, council. Name is Jim Drake. I've been a resident of Hayward since '63, and back then, you do a crime, you do the time, period. That's it. But what I'm here to talk about are the conditions of approval on the Taco Bill over on Franklin and Harder when they built the Taco Bill, building. And these conditions of approval was for the Taco Bill, there should have been no liquor there, period, being sold. Beer, wine, anything. And the other issue is the eucalyptus trees. Well, when I was going to, when I built my place, I was going to back it up right against, within four or five feet of the concrete wall back there where the back of the building was there, and I've got privacy looking out into the neighborhood. And I made a deal with, the city didn't like that. They wanted it reversed around and the building, my place, put back as far as it can against the neighbor's fence. Well, I did that, I agreed to it, but I had conditions of approval that went from Taco Bill to the next owner, to the next owner. They stayed in place. Well, Michelle Koo, she's the Paul Bunyan of our time. I mean, down in Santa Clara and Jackson, she cut down 15 and leased trees that were 150 feet, 100, over 150, over 100 feet tall. Didn't replace one, put ivy on the walls, and we got to look at those apartments, they're flat tops. And it says here in the conditions of approval, the existing eucalyptus trees along the north property line shall be maintained at a minimum height greater than the top of the roof of the adjacent residential property. Well, Koo, she gives me a call and says she's going to be chopping down those eucalyptus trees. I says, why? This is the best one. Because we want to give you more sunlight. I loves trees.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Drake.
Thank you.
You're kind of up. We do have Johnny Appleseed's on the staff too, though, to plant trees. Okay, our next speaker is Frank Running Horse, and he'll be followed by Gerald Smith.
Yes, hello, N.C. councilmen, persons. I come here today again, like I have for the last three months, in solidarity with the Gonzalez family and Augie Gonzalez. Now, I heard your city attorney to say, you guys can't talk about Augie Gonzalez, okay? But you can talk about city council policy. And that's one of the demands that the family is putting forward, is that they want an independent investigation. That's city policy. It's nothing, it's independent investigation of a homicide committed by the police. So you can talk about what your policy is to get over this crisis in your community, okay? We've got an angry community here, okay? And they're not going away. They need new policy that can get to justice. They know they can't trust the district attorneys, because we see it all across the country. Trigger-happy police getting let off by their district attorneys who are in their back pockets because they're getting all the campaign money.
That's right.
Okay? So we need independent investigation, investigators that are not in the back pocket of the police department who have an interest in preserving their innocence. So, and the city of Richmond, and I encourage everybody here to call up and email Eduardo Martinez, okay, from the city of Richmond, who introduced the Richmond ordinance that said anytime somebody is killed by the police in Richmond, there's an independent investigation, and they have an, okay? And anytime somebody even gets great bodily harm, there's an independent investigation. And this was introduced by Eduardo Martinez and passed by a vast majority of the city council, and already implemented, and achieved us recognition that P.D. Perez was killed unjustly by the Richmond police, when the district attorney and the police officers' investigation exonerated themselves. So this can restore confidence and leadership from this council, and I particularly want to appeal to you, Councilmember Hobbs, I heard you on Art Revolution, and I was impressed by what you said. You said you supported this community, you supported, take leadership, bring, talk Eduardo Martinez, pass the Richmond ordinance--
Mr. Running Horse, Mr. Running Horse, Councilmember Marquez, did you have a question for him?
I don't have a question, but I just want to respectfully ask that the speakers that come up, please speak up to the mic, because I heard you very well, but this is being recorded, and people watching at home, it's difficult to hear. So if you could please just speak into the mic so everyone's getting the same information. Thank you. Thank you. It's okay. Thank you.
They heard you.
Gerald, sorry, Gerald Smith, and he'll be followed by Diana Pont.
Yes, my name is Gerald Smith, member of the Oscar Grant Committee Against Police Brutality and State Repression. To continue along that line, I, we're talking about something that is eminently doable. We're not talking about some pie-in-the-sky stuff. In fact, I failed, but I was supposed to bring the ordinance with me, because I want you to look at it. This is something that you can do. And in fact, I think some of you may be aware of Senate Bill 1421. We have been, I personally have been involved in lobbying for that bill, and the bill passed. And I think you may even be aware of the fact that the Inglewood police, in order to not comply with this transparency bill, burned their archives in December, okay? We contacted the Attorney General, he assured us this would not happen again, but still, these so-called police unions, they're not unions because police are not workers, but these organizations have been consistently trying to block the enactment of this clear and simple bill that means simply that the citizens get copies of the police report, the coroner's report, et cetera. We understand the power of these organizations, but all powerful organizations are not necessarily right. We want you to do the right thing. So this ordinance, and you will begin, because I will personally deliver to you, you can also get it from Eduardo Martinez, as Running Horse just mentioned. But, you know, it's so simple, and we actually went through the experience, the city council hired an investigator, they actually re-investigated the facts of the case and came to a conclusion that in fact, P.D. Perez was wrongly murdered. And therefore, we are going to take action on that. And we believe that the same is true for Augie, and anybody, anybody that sees the facts and is not connected to any of these corrupt bodies that want to do murder by another name will come to that clear conclusion. Please think about it. This is something you can do. We expect you to do the right thing. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Diana Pont, Diana Pont, sorry, Diana Pont, followed by--
She went to the bathroom.
Tracy Rosenberg?
Diana went to the bathroom.
Okay, so I will call Tracy Rosenberg, and then we'll call Diana after that.
Good evening, city council. My name is Tracy Rosenberg. I'm with Media Alliance and with Oakland Privacy. We are governmental transparency advocates. We have members all throughout the nine-county Bay Area region. I'm here tonight, I mean, there's been a tragedy. A 19- or 20-year-old kid was murdered in cold blood, and there is very little that any of us can do in terms of unwinding the clock, turning things backward, or making that not have happened. But as you just heard, there is something that you can do. You can order an independent investigation right now. Why would you do that? Because if, and this is just a hypothetical if, if a murder was committed in cold blood without a justifiable reason, and we don't know that, it's possible, then you are risking it happening again to somebody else. I have asked for public records from numerous cities, and what I am finding is frankly, the names recur when you talk about these violent incidents. I ask for records in this case, and that case, and this case, and that case, in the same city, and it's the same problematic figures over and over and over again. We don't want that on our conscience, and hey, if it's not true, the independent investigation will get to the bottom of it. We need to know what happened, and we need to know what happened now, not in a year when multiple internal investigations have happened. And unfortunately, history shows that what we need here is independence, because when we have independent reviews and independent audits, they come out differently sometimes, perhaps frequently, from the internal ones, because there are different forces in play. So you can do that, and you need to do that, and from the point of view of legal liability, not to mention morals and ethics, you should do it. A 19-year-old kid died. He died 75 years before he should have. It's a tragedy. We need to do everything that we can do. And I'll also add, Senate Bill 1421, all of the records are going to come out. They really are. It's been upheld now by two different courts of appeal. It would be good for everyone involved and for the city to get out in front of it. Do an independent unquestionable audit, find out exactly what happened, and take action.
Thank you.
Don't wait.
Thank you. Diana Pont, is Diana Pont--
Justice for Augie! Justice for Augie! Justice for Augie! Justice for Augie!
Is Diana Pont, okay, I'm going to put her card, if she isn't here, we'll call Carlos Archuleta.
The city manager has a pattern of shutting down oversight like she is a king without accountability, while ignoring or belittling anyone who challenges her opinion or authority. She is unelected, therefore she should not have the power to tell elected city council what they can or cannot do, or they can best represent constituents that voted them into office. I say this is a pattern because I, as a resident, asked her office to advocate and renegotiate a better deal for the pay grant, which is her job and our most important right, our First Amendment right. Did you know that every resident in here can have their own TV show on Comcast and AT&amp;T for free? But they don't want you to know that, because that gives you, the residents, a huge platform to hold them accountable. They want to be able to make backroom deals out of sight from the public and strip power from our elected city council. This is the same tactic used by Scott Walker and his Republican allies after he lost his governor's seat in Wisconsin and passed bills to limit the power of incoming Democratic governor and his agenda. If you allow this to happen, it's checkmate. You are handing over the power of an elected official here in Hayward to an unelected official here in Hayward. I am also here tonight to once again speak about the pay grant. Last time I was here, Mr. Salinas, in a conflict of interest stated by Mr. Lawson, proposed to table the renegotiation of the pay grant until after the elections, and then conveniently, when the elections were over, disbanded the committee that renegotiated that grant. That is the definition of corruption to our most important right, the First Amendment right. That shows a pattern of the people in this room shutting down oversight and taking away platforms for people to voice their opinions for oversight. You guys keep making up lies to not address the renegotiation of this grant and to continue to give away taxpayer resources without any form of oversight. I would like a solid date within reason of the renegotiation timeline. You have clear proof that the current lease is not in the best interest of the taxpayers, while you knowingly allow Chabot College to launder that money to upgrade their channel. Thank you.
Thank you.
Justice for Mrs. Gonzalez and the Augie family.
Mayor. Um, Councilmember, Council--
Can I respond to the--
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Madam City Manager.
Yeah, and I want to just thank Mr. Archuleta for his comments. We are actually, per his request, undertaking an audit of the contract with Chabot College. I was actually on the phone with the administrators there earlier this month. The audit should be completed later this month, and then we'll be reporting back to the council on the status of that contract. So there is oversight, and we will be bringing that back to council with the findings of the audit.
Okay, thank you for the report. So our next speaker is Carlos Archuleta, followed by, oh, I'm sorry, Craig--
Craig!
Sorry, Carlos. Okay. Craig Emery, followed by Amanda--
Halberth.
Halberth, yeah. Thank you.
I'm here in solidarity with the Augie Gonzalez family, and what I saw on the internet was unacceptable, cannot be policy in the future. I will not pay tax dollars for it, and I'd like an independent investigation of it--
Yes, right now.
--to solve somebody who's missing, you know, from here right now. This shoot-to-kill, the shoot for critical mass, in circumstances like you can see on the internet, just a distraught boy here in the town, and then being killed that quickly. I can't pay taxes for that in the future. And I want it to end, and I want this city council to order an independent investigation of it.
Thank you. Amanda, Amanda Halberth, followed by Aunt Bee, Aunt Bee.
They look real cute. They would look a little bit better with mug shots, though. I stand with this family. This is my chosen family, and I just have a question. I know you guys can't speak on a lot, but maybe you guys could think about it in your head, because I really don't know anyone up here, or anyone in this room for that matter, that has watched the video or could watch the video, that could sit here and say to themselves, and be perfectly honest with themselves, that what happened was okay? That if the shoe was on the other foot, and it was their child, their brother, their father, their cousin, their loved one, their friend, that they would sit there and say that these two were in the right? I really don't. And if you think it's right, God bless you, and I will pray for you, and continue to pray for you.
The O.A. thinks it's right.
It's not. That's all I really want to say. And then I have another question. We say, you know, we say the pledge of allegiance when we come in here, and we say justice for all.
Yes.
Are we just saying it to say it?
For Augie!
You know what I mean? I know you guys have said you send your condolences, your deepest sympathy, stuff like that. We've heard that. We've heard it enough, you know what I mean? Show it, yeah.
We want justice.
There's actions that can be taken. There's actions that can be taken, and you guys are just as accountable. I'm sure you guys talked to them. I'm pretty sure you guys talked to them. You've seen them, you know what their story was, and you see Augie's side of it. He didn't have, he didn't have a chance to even tell a story.
Seven seconds.
Seven seconds. Seventeen seconds.
That's all I got to say. It just disgusts me to even be up here and that it hits close to home. And what you think will never happen to you just might happen to you. And one day, one day, you might have to put the shoe on the other foot, and I pray to God that people give you the justice and your family members-- and your family member the justice if it ever happens. God bless you all.
Thank you. The card says Aunt Bee, and followed by Rachel Schenkel. Is Aunt Bee here? Okay, I'll put her card at the back too, then. Rachel Sprinkle? Schenkel, Rachel Schenkel.
Hello, I'm Rachel Schenkel. I'm here with Juliana Morris. We are so humbled and grateful to be invited here by Augie's mother to stand with you all. We join in mourning your son and stand alongside you to fight for justice for him. To the city councilors, we are here as health workers, a primary care physician, and a physician in training, and as members representing Do No Harm, a coalition of over 200 health workers fighting for an end to police brutality and other forms of state violence. We are here to stand with the family. We are grieved and enraged by his unjust death. We demand accountability. We demand an independent, unbiased investigation. We demand for the officers who killed him to be removed from the force. The circumstances of Augie's death at the hands of Hayward Police are deeply troubling. Although he was having a mental health situation and needed compassionate support, mental health care, instead, he was met with bullets. Instead of Augie's family being met with compassion deep for gut and transparency, as well as accountability, from the Hayward Police Department and the city, they have had to fight for every detail they have been told, even the name of the hospital where their son passed away. And we want to call the council's attention to the layers of repercussions that this killing has on the entire community. Police brutality is a kind of terrorism. Just as an act of terrorism does not only affect the victim and the family and those who knew the victim, these acts affect everyone who identifies with this victim, everyone who feels terror for themselves and their loved ones because of, they see themselves in Augie and his loved ones. Tragically, we know that Augie's death is part of a much larger trend of police killing in our country that disproportionately impacts people of color and people with mental illness in this country. People with mental illness are sixteen times more likely to be killed by police than other people. At the same time, the experience of terror that communities experience from these acts leads to further mental illness, including post-traumatic stress disorder, depression, anxiety, and the physical illnesses that those also cause. And there is a vicious cycle here that needs to be broken. As healers and scientists, we are here to emphasize what everyone in this community knows, that if this council and city fail to recognize this act as murder, if you stand with the officers instead of with the community, that there are consequences for the health and physical and mental health of this entire community. Health is a human right, and as health workers, we have a duty to eradicate the systems of oppression that threaten this right. We stand with the Gonzalez family today in horror and grief, and we demand for justice and accountability for Augie.
I'm sorry, Juliana Morris, were you Juliana Morris?
Yes.
Oh, okay, all right. So that was both of you then, all right. Lacey Amodai. And she'll be followed by Cynthia... Cynthia Nunes.
Nunes.
Nunes, sorry.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Lacey Amode. I am an organizer with the Hayward Collective. I'm coming here as an individual and as a member of the Hayward Collective to express our deep solidarity and grief alongside the Gonzalez family. So I really just wanted to say that, looking at the demands of the family, just demanding more accountability, demanding an independent investigation, and demanding that these officers that carried out this murder be removed from the force, I'm just struck by how modest these acts are, and how for anyone who has lost their son, their friend, their father, this is the least that they should have. And for the community, this is the least that we could have. So I feel deeply troubled and frankly ashamed that my community and the world that I'm raising my daughter in is that this is the world we're going to have. I was really struck by when we were coming across and saw, you know, the family members getting ready for tonight's action, that I had to explain to her that after someone has lost their son, that this is what they have to do, just to have the minimum foreclosure to know what happened. So I understand, I heard city attorneys' advice at the beginning, and I understand, I think you just listened, but I would like to say that at the very least, right now, or however you communicate to the public, I think at the very least, I really want to know from each and every one of you a response to what they're asking for. And even if it's not within your control, I want to know what you're gonna do with your privileged position of authority to move it forward, even if it not is within your control as a city council member. So to each and every one of you, please, you need to respond. What do you think about their ask for more accountability? You're the leader, so what are your ideas to improve that? What do you think about their ask for independent investigation? We've heard about already a model ordinance that's been enacted from our neighbor to the north. What are you gonna do to put that forward? And finally, removing them from the force, whatever the vices you need to follow, but you need to respond to it, and you need to say what you're gonna do up there to put these forward. Justice for Augie, and thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia Nunes, followed by Lindsay Williams.
Hello. I'm standing up here again for the fourth time, hoping you'd know my name by now. I'm standing up here because I'm gonna tell you the same thing I've been telling you for four months. These cops should be off the streets. They should not be working anymore. They should be in prison. You know? And also, just an FYI, in case you didn't know, which I'm sure you did, you can actually vote out the city manager if you choose to, you as a council, at one of these meetings. So, I mean, that's all it takes, is for you to vote a majority, and maybe we'll get some answers, because you say it's not your job. Well, there's your answer right there. You know, the city manager's back there was flirting with cops earlier when she knows we're here. We, I want to know why our city doesn't have a mental health crisis or de-escalation team specific for this. A lot of other cities have this. When situations like this happen, they call out a specific team that has exact training on this. Why is this not something that we are doing here in this city? You know, the cops made the decision to pull their triggers. They weren't forced. They made that decision, and now they made their bed and they need to lie in it. So they should be off the streets, they shouldn't be getting paid, and they should go to prison for it. Also, back to the independent investigation too, we don't want Hayward investigating themselves, Hayward PD. We don't want the DA investigating because, just a little fun fact for anyone who didn't know, Mayor Barbara Holliday took an endorsement from Hayward PD last year, a monetary, along with City Councilwoman Sarah Lamnan as well, is endorsed by Hayward PD. And also, so is Nancy O'Malley. So please tell me how that is going to be credible in this investigation for my cousin. In what world does it make sense that you're being paid in the position you're at by the people who murdered my cousin? How are we supposed to put any faith in anyone that has that? So if you didn't know, now you know. Justice for Augie.
Lindsay Williams, followed by Rosara. Is Lindsay Williams here? Lindsay Williams?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm gonna try to keep it like short and simple. I've been here enough times. You should remember me, I've looked you in your eye. I hope you've looked me in mine. First things first, like I'm just like, take this from like a different like light or whatever, but like essentially, like you gotta stop like taking and allowing like, your people, you guys, her, Kelly, like, stop allowing them to take money from the police departments. And like, it's a conflict of interest when it comes to these situations. If you don't understand why, literally Google it, or like ask anybody in here why it's a conflict of interest. I shouldn't even have to break that down to you as to like why any of you taking contributions from a police department, if you see it as anything besides like a silencer, you're silly. I don't even understand how you made it up there if you don't think that like they're paying you off and you're willingly accepting those payments. The other thing is like, seriously, like every police department should have a crisis intervention team. That's what Cynthia was just talking about, like that special team that's supposed to come in and not kill people when they're asking for help. They actually come and de-escalate things. You guys really need to, like you, I'm just looking at you, Kelly, because apparently it's your job and no one else's. But like, you guys really need to like prioritize like some frickin' mental crisis training for your police officers. Don't just nod at me, be real about it. The way you take money, like how much money does it take to actually get you to do things that like the citizens want you to do? If you let us know, like there's crowdfunding, there's sites, we could put up a frickin' GoFundMe to fill your pockets. Like, but like, it really just needs to be a thing. And I know for a fact that if you were to prioritize it for your police departments, because you like, they like to fill up their calendars full of all this other bullshit. Look at this weapon, look at this new gun. Put crisis, like crisis management in there, prioritize it. There's a bunch of nonprofits, a lot of local and faraway organizations that will come and willingly train your police departments to stop this crap from happening. There shouldn't be this many people coming up here. This whole thing of like city council is like an archaic frickin' thing. But like, the thing about it is that like, when it first began, like everyone sitting up here was actually fixing the problems. You just sit here and you nod your heads, but you're not doing anything. Do your job. I go to work every day and I do my job, and then I come all the way out here to tell you to do your job. And you're making more money than me, and I'm sure that like my little car, you could fill it up without blinking. So like, do your job, Kelly. I know you got enough money, do your job. Stop taking it from the police department. Stop that shit.
Rosara, followed by Donna... I'm sorry, Danny Ray. Rosara?
Hi, folks. Hopefully, everyone's doing as well as we can be during this time, right? Justice for Augie is necessary. It's not something that we should be considering, oh, maybe we should, maybe we shouldn't. This is within the context of people losing their lives over years and years. But there was a pinnacle in 2014 with, you know, Michael Brown and Gardner, right? And because we have videos, we're able to see now the injustices that are happening. So please consider that. But my name is Rosaura Figueroa Mendoza. I'm a community organizer with the Hayward Collective. And like I said, justice for Augie is required, it's necessary. It's not just for him, it's for everybody that lives here in Hayward and beyond. The Hayward Collective was founded because grassroots community organizing is required to hold those in power accountable. If you're wondering what a community organizer is, think Dolores Huerta, Dr. King, Cesar Chavez, Gandhi. These individuals gave their life for the good of the people, for justice. Without an organized body led by the people, our individual concerns flap away in the wind. But together, we have the ability to create social change in Hayward and beyond. We pay taxes to fund your roles. The expectation is that you work to serve our needs, right? And so if the family is here, if the community is here asking for justice, asking for an independent investigation, please listen to that. Please take it seriously. You have the power to do that. Beyond politics, we're all human beings with flaws. Hopefully, we can take a deep breath, take a deep breath, right? And consider this, we each deserve to be treated with love, dignity, and respect. Did Philip Woolley and Michael Clarke consider Augie's humanity?
No!
With thirteen shots in seven seconds, how could they? How could they? I think about my own brother. I would be fucking devastated if he was killed. I ask that you bring justice to Augustine Gonzalez by ordering an independent investigation as soon as possible. There are parallel investigations currently underway, but please begin the process of an independent investigation right now. I am in solidarity with the family, and I am in solidarity with anybody that's willing to work for justice to hold the police department accountable. Thank you.
Danny Ray, followed by Stan Woods. Danny Ray. Danny Ray, followed by Stan, okay, thank you.
I'm Danny Ray. The police in this country have absolutely no accountability for the actions that take place. On a daily basis, we are hearing stories of police killing our communities. And they are not being charged for it. They are able to go home to their family members after a long, hard day of killing minds. You are giving bloodthirsty racists a badge and a gun. All across the country, they're killing minorities, and they're calling it justice. It is absolutely sickening how many African-Americans and Latinos are being killed across the country on a weekly basis, on a daily basis. This is no longer a coincidence, this is a genocide against minorities. Augie Gonzalez was innocent. He was having a mental breakdown. What this situation has taught me is that I, I'm not allowed to have a mental breakdown just because I'm Mexican. I'm not allowed to have a mental breakdown because I'm a minority. I'm not allowed to have a mental breakdown, or else I'm gonna get shot by Michael Clarke and Philip Woolley. And they are still on duty. They're protecting the very city that we are all living in. And I want you all to just think of one thing. Not everybody here on the city council is Caucasian. What if that had been your children having a mental breakdown? What if they got shot just because they're mentally ill? It's sickening. What if they got shot just because a couple of trigger-happy cops showed up to the scene and started blasting within seven seconds? Would you have respect for Philip Woolley? Would you have respect for Michael Clarke? Would you wait to hear their side of the story? No! You would demand justice just like our family would. We need police to have consequences for each of their actions. We need jail-killer cops. We need to jail-killer cops for killing innocent people.
Stan Woods. Stan Woods, followed by, I don't know the whole name of the person, Luis.
Hi, I'm Stan Woods. I'm with the Oscar Grant Committee on State Repression, as several of us here are, and also in the previous two meetings. And we were formed shortly after the internationally known murder of Oscar Grant. And since then, we've been involved in literally dozens of cases, often police shootings that we consider to be murder, sometimes beatings, sometimes frame-ups, all sorts of incidents. And you know, the details vary, but the lexicon of police rationale is similar. And really, all over the country, it's like they have a textbook, I'm sure they do. Quote, "We thought he had a gun." "We thought he was..." Yeah, "with fear of my life." "We thought he was going," or sometimes she, "was going for the officer's gun." "He," sometimes she, "was trying to use their vehicle to run down officers." "The officers thought a light was a muzzle flash." "We thought the..." In this case, a nineteen-year-old bipolar woman in San Jose had an Uzi. And then, of course, in Hayward recently, we thought the person was carrying a knife. Of course, in all these cases, there were no knives, there were no guns. Actually, there's a few cases that were guns, or legally permitted guns, which were not aimed, but none of the Bay Area cases, except for one I can think of. There was no muzzle, the muzzle flash was a light from a cellphone, and of course, there was no knife, there was a razor blade. I mean, it would almost be comical, and of course, and stuff on, it would almost be comical, except that... comical, except that it's, it's not tragic. Tragic is when a, uh, somebody drives out of their driveway and accidentally hits a little kid on a bicycle. These are crimes. And, and somebody mentioned before, asking for firing is so modest. I used to be a union shop steward. I defended workers who were fired for absenteeism. Or fired for a forklift driver who accidentally, his for- defective forklift dropped a case of wine. But these guys, and when, even when cities give, settle for hundreds of thousands, sometimes millions of dollars, they're still not fired. And, so you guys should think of the consequences. It may seem like there's a relatively few people here today, but there could be thousands in the street of Hayward demanding justice. And it may not always take the forms that some of us seasoned activists wanted to take. So you gotta decide what you're going to do, and as for the city attorney, I mean, the city manager, she is an employee, she could be fired. And I think you should take, immediately, take strong measures to, one, to fire the two cops involved in the shooting, and secondly, to recommend to Nancy O'Malley that they be prosecuted for murder. Thank you.
Luis, Luis, I don't have a last name on this one. Okay, and followed by, um, Amaya Rodriguez.
I'm back again. Little Aggie was my cousin, that's who it was, to remind you guys. Last time I spoke as a veteran, an Army infantry veteran who served in a combat zone, just to let you know that there's ways to control actions and situations that are life-threatening. You know, I spoke about that last time, and I just wanted to instill those, those things in you guys to know that there's ways to find out, where they can get training, and all the discussion things that we want, but they need to want to do this. And that's, you know, that's, that's all I wanted to say last time, but the one thing, I heard him, the city attorney here was there, was the word strategic. And it kinda sounded like you said it in a negative tone. Not sure if you did, but strategic is a word I know very well, being military. Strategic is being, going on missions, trying to get the upper hand of situations. Strategic is trying to come up on top of situations. My family did ask to get involved in this chess game of yours. But we're in it now. And you're fucking right, we're gonna be strategic about this right now. We're gonna do what we have to do to get justice for, for little Aggie. It's not something we wanted, it's not something a lot of families wanted. But we're gonna be strategic. We got no other choice right now. We wanna come out on top, we wanna come out with peace of mind. So yeah, we're gonna be strategic. We want the upper hand, no matter what we gotta do. So with that said, we want accountability, we want independent investigations, but we want the police to know that, I know that not all cops are bad. Like I said, my brother's a cop, my close cousin's a cop, LAPD. A lot of my army buddies are cops. And they know how to handle situations, because they want to. Because they wanna come out, they wanna save lives, not take them. That's where they have to start. And if they can't ha- if their record shows that they're not like that, get them, get them out of the force. There's a lot of people wanna be cops. They'll step in the line. But they gotta have, you know, repercussions for what they do, serious ones. Not give you guys money, so you guys can sell your souls and they can keep their damn jobs. And someone like, little cousin couldn't even keep his life. We voted you guys in to be our voices. We voted for you guys to be our political warriors. Don't sell your souls for money. We all have a record incoming to us. You know? But be our voices, be our warriors. Thank you.
Thank you. Amaya Rodriguez, followed by Michael Kerr. Amaya Rodriguez? Uh, Michael Kerr. Okay, um, followed by, oh, Michael Kerr? Yes, okay, thank you.
I'm a member of Veterans for Peace, and I'm a member of Green Party, specifically Diablo Greens, and I'm a member of Our Revolution Contra Costa. And while I speak for myself, I have no doubt that almost everyone in these organizations are totally disgusted at the police brutality and killing of innocent people that is rampant across this country. We have a problem here. Police unions, police departments are run like the mafia. They have a code of silence, and they protect each other no matter what they do. They shouldn't be allowed to have anything to do with politics as far as donating, or do, money, or anything like that. Police need serious training. Many, especially in these days, many of our police applicants are veterans of our wars across this world. And, and these people, soldiers, are trained to think of people of color as inhuman, and kill them is okay, shoot first. And it doesn't matter if they're innocent or not. This is the way the military is trained, and this is the people that are, a lot of them that are applying to be police departments. They need serious training to, to learn to respect all human life. And I, I just wanna say that, uh, there's no excuses for a police officer to kill anyone unless they're being actually fired on or in serious danger. There's too much of this easy excuse, "I'm, I was fearing for my life." On almost every incidence that where police kill an innocent person, there was many other people around in the situation, and none of them felt threatened that they had to use deadly force against this person. It's only when the police arrive, and within short period of time, their solution is to shoot first, and then, and then make excuses why they felt threatened, and why they were fearful of their life, even though nobody else around had that feeling, okay? So sometimes, I don't feel like it's safe. If, if somebody's doing something to me, I don't wanna call the police, because usually I don't think what they're doing deserves a death penalty. Anyway, so you have an obligation, people have told you, set up individual, independent investigations of all your police, and do something right away, so that no police on the street that are actually, have killed somebody. Thank you.
Thank you. Warren, Warren Foster? Warren Foster, followed by Jessica Noons. Is Warren Foster here? Okay. Jessica Noons?
I'm Jessica Noons. Uh, Aggie was my cousin. First, I have to tell y'all, because I don't think that you can hear it enough, and I'm not gonna stop talking about it. Uh, my cousin, my cousin was an incredible person. He was an outstanding father, a warrior of a cousin. He was a dream of a son, and he was a brother bear to his sister. He was not a criminal, nor deserving of thirteen shots. I hate that number, by the way. Uh, numbers are triggers now for me. Thirteen is always gonna be the number of times that Hayward PD shot my cousin. Seven, my cousin was seven months older than me, um, and Hayward PD killed him in seven seconds. Twenty-nine, he was twenty-nine years young, um, when your department, your department, killed him. And I'll be twenty-nine next month, and I wish I could skip it, because I fucking hate that number now. It's taken a lot for me to talk up here, because I've been in the activist community for a while in Sacramento, and it's crazy to me that instead of chanting a stranger's name now, I'm chanting my cousin's name. I also work in mental health, I'm a social worker in Sacramento. In the week that, uh, my cousin was killed, I was de-escalating a nineteen-year-old woman who had a knife, an actual knife. And, um, she eventually gave the knife to us. She eventually went to respite. She eventually saw the next day, and we eventually got to go home. That was easy, and it took a lot longer than seven seconds. But that's worth it to me, and I want it to be worth it to y'all. I wrote a ton of shit, trying to sound smart to you guys, because I went to school, I went to grad school, and like, at the end of the day, like, there's just so much shady shit happening. Like, driving with a fucking gun on the steering wheel, are you kidding me? Like, that's, he opened the door with the gun in his hand, he was ready to shoot. Fucking Clarke's camera not on? What the hell, you guys? That's just silly, right? Like, and then DeCosta seemingly covering up her camera, like, it's just shady shit after shady shit, and then keeping my cousin's car that had nothing, it was like, not even in any of the video footage, which was also disgusting, by the way. Seventeen minutes of you guys creating this like, YouTube video that's like, commercial as fuck and corroborates a story that fits you? It's just embarrassingly disgusting, and you gotta fix it. Like, this shit can't happen again. It's disgusting.
Angelica, Angelica Lewis, followed by Araceli Orozco. Angelica Lewis, is she here? Uh, Araceli Orozco?
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'm here in solitary support, you know, with the Gonzalez family. I feel their pain, their frustration. And all they're asking is three, four simple things. Accountability, independent investigation, and the most important, you know, the mental health, uh, training for our officers. I have my son, and just the thought that that could happen to my son, it's just unbearable. And most of the community fears this. You know, my little one, which is five, she knows what's going on. And every time we see a police officer, she asks me, "Is that the guy, is that the police officer that killed the, the man mom?" How can you explain something like that to a five-year-old? And it's, it's all of you, you guys could really make a difference here, and do the right thing. And, um, somebody shouted out, you know, about, um, city manager making two hundred and fifty. Well, let me, I have some news for you. Transparent California, uh, this is public, um, records, three hundred and forty-five thousand, and that, that's in, and that's in two thousand and seventeen. Yes. So we need, for you, I'm asking you, and not only myself, but this whole community, to help people accountable. If not, we are going to go and take district measures here, because we're, I'm not willing to spend another month, a year, with the same fears that this will happen to my son. So I'm asking all of you, please, do something about it.
Thank you. Is Diana Pont, Diana Ponce back in the room? No, okay. Carla Gonzalez. Carla? Carla Gonzalez? Followed by Frankie. I'm sorry.
My name, Carla Gonzalez. Been here four times. So I know we can't talk about our case, it was told to us already, but, so, I wanna know, on, we've been here five times. I was asked for patience, to give you guys time. So, other than we're looking for justice for my son, and answers we can't get right now, the answers that you guys could give is, what are you guys gonna do about the changes? I mean, basically, that's what you guys are supposed to do, is changes. So we have a lawsuit, but even if the lawsuit goes our way, or whatever, it's not gonna help if you guys don't make no changes. If we're still here doing the same thing, and then I have to come speak with another family. So my question is, I'm a little confused on some measurements of the command here, okay? So, we have a mayor, we have a city manager. So, mayor, are you above the city manager, or is the city manager above you? Because last time, you kinda threw her under the bus. So, you know, you directed a lot of things to her. So we're, I just wanna know, what is the chain of command? You know, everybody at work has a chain of command, right? So who can make the changes? City manager, or mayor and the councils? Can I have any answer to that?
We all have our responsibilities prescribed in the charter, city charter, and so there is, there is somewhat of a chain of command. The city, no one member of the city council has, um, has any authority in and of themselves, including the mayor.
Okay, so, so, okay, I understand that. So, mayor, what is your role? What is your role? Are you, you're above?
Okay, well, we're not gonna go through that tonight, but, yeah. I'm sorry, I, I don't wanna interrupt your time.
I just need to know, so, when I'm talking, I know who, who am I gonna direct? Who, who's the one that's supposed to be the ones coming back to me with answers? Because when I ask you, you ask her, you ask her, you ask you. Who is accountable? Out of this group, who's gonna, who am I gonna see for changes? Your city councils are, are, you're, you're supposed to be the mother of these city councils, right? That's how I look at it. You're the one in charge. And then, so, city manager, who is your boss? Who's the boss of the, uh, district attorney? That's what I would like to know. Who is the boss of the district attorney?
The city, the city council does hire and supervise all, the city manager and the city attorney.
So city council, so everybody on this, not just you. So you have like, the last vote? Is that what it is?
One vote, like everybody else.
Wow. That's just, that's kind of incredible, you know? Have all these people up here, and there's no, really no accountability for them, and we're asking for accountability from the cops. We can't even get accountability for our city hall, our city councils. So I'm just looking to see, where is the rule of justice for my son gonna come from? You know, where is, where can I'm gonna make that change for my son? Because even at that point, because it seems like everybody's point with the, with, with the lawsuit is, how much money do I want for my son? Are you kidding me? I want my son back! I want justice, I want you guys to make changes!
Thank you, I'm sorry that, your time is up. Frankie? Frankie, followed by, um, Frankie, is Frankie here? Someone, okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council members. Um, I'm here as a concerned citizen. Wow, I had so much to say, but after what just happened, I don't really know where to start. How do we call a vote for an independent investigation for this family? I'm, I'm asking a question, can we have a vote, tonight? How do we do that? Madam McAdoo, can we?
I think that the city attorney, were you here when the city attorney spoke earlier?
I was, and he said the family isn't entitled to an independent investigation. Can we have that? Can we have that?
I believe he said when the other investigators, investigations are concluded.
That was, that was your council's advice to you.
I think I'll let the city attorney answer some of those questions, if you can.
My advice in direction earlier...
Can you speak up? I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I'm speaking.
I know, I couldn't hear you.
I'm speaking. My advice in direction, my advice in direction earlier was to listen and not engage. What I said earlier is that the family has the right to request an independent investigation from the State Department of Justice, or the Office of the Attorney General. There are parallel investigations going on. At the conclusion of those investigations, I could recommend an independent review. That's what I said earlier. I do advise that the mayor and council listen, decline to engage, or even respond to questions. The questions can be asked, but I recommend that there not be engagement, primarily because there is pending litigation.
I'd also like to put this forward. I know it's, it's pretty measly compared to what I've seen that the city manager is making. But anyways, I'd like to make a private contribution. I've redacted my private information. This is just one of your installments, and maybe we could speak later. Just for getting just simple justice for this family. I think it's the right thing to do.
All right. I have a card that says Augie. Is there someone who filled out that card, who wants to speak?
Yes, I'm Augie Gonzalez's father. And I'm also the son of a retired Hayward PD reserve officer of 29 years, that spent a couple of years riding along with the current police chief. And I remember that day, we were out there, when you guys were showing the video. And you guys had the nerve to look into our eyes, especially you guys over there, saying you guys are gonna look at this, give us all the sympathy. And then, I don't know who did it, but somebody gave the okay to go and slash it all to show the officers' versions of what happened. Yeah, my son was having a breakdown, but nobody was sent, nobody knows, unless you were there, that that day it happened. He got approached by a neighbor who encountered, engaged with him. My son is not one to start a fight. He'll defend himself. This person struck him first. If you look there, I checked 10 different places, self-defense. Nobody mentions that. Self-defense. He tried three times to leave the situation. Tried to leave. This person stopped him every time. And then, the last time my son tried to leave, if it wasn't for the surveillance camera of the apartments, we don't know what happened. My son left, this person ran after him, all of a sudden, that's when everything happened. We don't know what happened, but to set my son off there, and then all of a sudden, somebody goes, this person, neighbor goes and calls 911, like they're the ones that, that's in Saying he had a knife, he had this and this. You're encountering somebody right in front of you for 20 minutes, and then, R to serve and protect police, which, you know, growing up, my dad worked 50 hours a week, a regular job, and then went on weekends, the busiest nights to go on patrol. For you guys, the city of Hayward. He never did that, he told me Drew's gun faced a lot of knives. Never shot one person. Here, you give the, these two officers, there was three officers there. A female officer showed up first. And we all know already, because we, we've seen some in the past, one of them, you know, like I said, seems like they do not respect women. I'm not gonna get into that here, but you guys know what I'm talking about. Because there's, there was a lawsuit by a Hayward cop, female Hayward cop, and one of the two, his name was mentioned in it.
Mr. Gonzalez, thank you. Mr. Gonzalez, thank you.
My, my dad gave 29 years, I think I'm entitled for one more minute. So, what I just wanna say is, right here, these officers showed up, seven seconds, they don't know what happened 20 minutes ago. They don't know there was a guy right there saying he felt for his life, when he was on the phone with 911, and smoking a cigarette, but he felt for his life. But yet, you guys, the cops here, did not have the time. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, seven seconds, to find out what happened there.
Thank you.
So, you guys gotta know that. Excuse me, 29 years, okay? Give me 10 more seconds. And that's what I'm gonna say, you guys can make this change. Stand up to everybody out there. Something's gonna happen now. Justice for Augie.
Okay, Eduardo, Eduardo Orozco? I'm sorry. Eduardo Orozco, followed by Iman, Iman, I'm sorry, Iman Siddiqui.
Good evening, everybody. Like everybody else here, I'm, I'm just here asking justice for Augie, and justice for the Gonzalez family. By now, every one of you saw the video, and you know that there's no mistake. I mean, that cop is a cold-blooded killer, and he killed Augie. I mean, there's no mistake on that. You have the power to do something, you have the power to fire that cop. Well, maybe you don't have the power, maybe the city manager has. Because it's, you know, as, as time goes by, it's, it's getting more obvious to me that the one that runs the show here is the city manager. So, in my book, you, city councils, I mean, you get her direction, what to do, and she needs to execute, right? She works for you. So, I don't know, what are you waiting for? Why, why is that cop still in the streets? He's getting, enjoying his pay, and enjoying his benefits, and he's still out there patrolling, trying to protect our citizens? I don't think so. You know what? That guy is gonna, is gonna be so easy for him in another situation, just pull the gun and kill another person. So, I'm not sure if she's the one in charge, or you are. Who's the one that has the authority to fire a, a police officer? Is that something that you can answer? No? Nobody can answer that question?
Well, it does not lie with the city council.
I'm sorry?
Lies with the police chief and the city manager. But the police chief, yes, is in charge of the police department.
And, and, and who responds to the police chief? I mean, who is the police chief's honor? Who hired the police chief? Is the city manager?
Yes.
So, I guess she has the authority to, to remove this officer, right? But she's refusing to do it. So, she's being your employee, I guess that you can, you know, give her direction to do it, and she can do it. And if she's, she doesn't wanna do it still, maybe you can fire her. You know, because this is, this is part of her responsibilities and her duties. I mean, we have, you have an employee here that makes more than $350,000, and, and you allow her to do all this. You know, you need to put a stop on this. And you have the power to do it. She works for you. You don't work for her. So, make the change and give the, the Gonzalez family, family justice.
Iman Siddiqui, followed by Veronica Solano.
Hello, mayor and council members. My name is Iman Siddiqui, with a Q, not with a G. First, I'm here in solidarity with August, with the Augustine family. I urge you to have an independent investigation. And more importantly, have better mental health and de-escalation training for the Hayward PD. Clearly, they need this. Secondly, the referral process presented by the city manager, McAdoo, is a power play by her own, by her to strip each of you of your power. We voted for you. We didn't vote for her. She should have no say in this process. She should be taking directions from each of you. It shouldn't be the other way around. Now, some of you may like this process, because it allows you to default to the process. Let's be real.
Are you speaking about an item that we haven't gotten to yet on the agenda? Did you wanna wait until we have that item on the agenda?
No, because we're already here, and it's already my turn, so...
Okay, go ahead then.
I just like to point that out. So, as I was saying, all of you, with the exception of Councilman Wahab, have done nothing in the year that you have had your seat. So, waiting on her for the timeline, and having a, having a limit of three to five referrals per year, could easily dismiss you of doing your job. And if this is the case, you should all be ashamed of yourselves. Do not vote for this process to pass. You're doing all of us an injustice. Councilmembers Marquez, Francisco, Mandel, and Councilmember Salinas, you are all next for reelection. So, if you vote for this process, we will remember, and we will organize to vote. We will organize, and we will vote you out. Don't think that you can keep us in the dark anymore. Listen to us and do your job. Thank you. Justice for Augie.
Veronica Solario. And I believe if Aunt Bee is back, she would be next.
Hi, my name is Veronica Solario, I'm with the Hayward Collective. I also come today wearing my La Familia hat. As, I don't know if you even know, but I'm a clinical case manager at La Familia, and I work with folks every day who have severe mental health illnesses. And part of my job is going to de-escalation, mental health trainings. I go to my job every single day, unarmed, no taser, no baton, nothing. I go into family situations, into their homes, when my clients are having crisis. And I'm expected to de-escalate these situations, because my clients' families are too afraid to call the police, because they know how police react when communities of color are calling them. So, I'm the default, me, a five-foot woman, to de-escalate situations, to try to get my clients taken to John George, because they do not trust a police officer who does not have the proper training in mental health. If you're a mom, if you're a dad, if your loved one were to be having a heart attack, easily, you call the 911. You know your loved one's gonna be taken to the hospital with medical professionals. But if your loved one is having a psychiatric emergency, who do you call? You can't call the ambulance right away. You have to call the PD, you have to call the sheriffs, if you don't live in unincorporated, if you live in unincorporated Hayward. And they're not, they're not medical professionals to be trained in psychiatric emergencies. And they have to evaluate your loved one, and then decide if they're going to San Arito, or if they're going to John George to get the medical attention. And that's a whole different story. But I just wanna let you guys know that me, a five-foot woman, is taking de-escalation training every year, multiple times a year, to try to get my clients to come down from whatever episode they're having that day. And because my clients' families are too afraid to call the police department, and I'm here in support of all the demands that the Gonzalez family is making. Thank you.
Aunt Bee, and Diana Pontz, is she also back? No? Okay, Aunt Bee.
Good evening. I wanted to come and say several things. First of all, someone was saying that police need more training. I disagree. The police get all the training that they need. What they need to do is be held accountable. Charged, arrested, convicted, and sent to prison when they murder. Because we have more than enough evidence that prove that police are well-trained. Because when there is a white man, or a white woman, or a white young boy, they are not murdered. They are taken to Burger King after killing a whole bunch of people. We got lots and lots of videos of that. And that is an actual fact. I'm not making it up. That is the truth. So, since that is the truth, it has nothing to do with training. It has everything to do with the mindset. And officers need to be held accountable. Because it's not just about life, which is the most important thing, that you need to preserve life. But the fact that officers can kill, rape, sell drugs, come into the community and terrorize, and never be held responsible, how do you think the community is going to act? The police are the biggest gangs on the planet. What they do and what they get away with dictates what happens in these communities. So, when they come in the community, taking drug dealers' money and drugs, what makes the drug dealer think that they, they don't have to abide by the law? So, it starts at the top with the police not being held accountable. If you want crime to go down, just start arresting some of these police officers. Because they have a domino effect on the community. So, I'm taking it another way, because all of it is important. And another thing I wanna say, that person who attacked Augie, he should be charged. His assault, he started it, in my opinion, he kidnapped him. He held him against his will. He needs to be charged. And the last thing I'm gonna say, because I'm not a talker, my husband's not here, he's at another meeting organizing, but I think you guys don't understand, this family is not going nowhere. So, what we're gonna start doing, is we're gonna start organizing on the phone, with all the people that we work with, that we take to Sacramento for these bills. And we're gonna come and help this family. We're gonna bring Oakland, we're gonna bring Stockton, we're gonna bring Sacramento, we're gonna bring Vallejo, all those people who are in this struggle for police accountability. We're gonna come to Hayward, we're gonna put Hayward on the map. You need to be put on the map to be held responsible for police terrorism, and you need to give this family some justice.
Thank you. Melissa Mallory, followed by Andy Bresenyo.
I wanna speak for Augustine Gonzalez. I don't know Augustine Gonzalez, I didn't know him. The first time I heard his name was in January, when I came in for the swearing-in of the new city council members. And I sat here with my heart breaking, while I watched this family speak over and over about how their family member had been shot 13 times by the police in seven seconds. I'm outraged, as a member of the community, and I think there needs to be police accountability. Too many police departments have a bunch of white supremists, racist people in their force, and they don't do anything about it. And those emails, you know, in the past cases, we found out the people were emailing each other in the force, with the police department email, racist jokes, and they're still on the police... the police force? There's no accountability. There's no accountability. And I know I was going to speak later about number nine, but I just want to say that those two are linked. How in the world are we supposed to get justice for Augustine Gonzalez when city council members are limited how many referrals they can make per year?
Hello, everyone. My name is Andy Bresenyo. I'm the co-president for the Stable Collective at Shebo College. I want to see justice for Augie and all others wrongfully murdered by the police. I know you all can vote on an open investigation, as it will not tamper with the lawsuit filed. Police should be held accountable for their wrongful acts of violence. I and on the behalf of the Stable Collective are against police brutality and demand these police be fired and held accountable for their actions. The city council should stand behind the Gonzalez family. We are not asking for much. It's basic information and accountability. Also, we should have a mental health crisis center and should have better protocol on how to handle situations. Cops have laughed in our faces when we simply ask questions at their panels about police brutality and wrongful killings. Cops have no humanity here. And many of you who have the ability to demand these corrupt cops to be held accountable for their actions, don't do so. There is no excuse for what has occurred and what will continue to occur if nothing is done. If we want to put the sign at the entrance and exit of Hayward that states no room for racism, why are we still racially profiling individuals? Stop putting these cops on pedestals and take them off the force. Vote on an independent investigation because you can and do the right thing. Let's get justice for Augie. Thank you.
That was the last card I have on this item. If there's anyone else who would like to speak? Seeing no one, we're going to close the public comment part of this meeting. Oh, sorry, come on forward. Please state your name and also subsequently, please fill out a card for the city clerk. Go ahead and speak first.
Hi, my name is Mo Kim. I live in Hayward, and I'm in solidarity with Augie today and everyone supporting him today. Everything I want to say has been said better by other people in the room, so I think I'm just going to offer one more perspective. I am a high school teacher in Hayward. I love my students deeply. And that means I have responsibility for their well-being, which is not just intellectual, but also emotional and personal. As part of my training, we are taught to handle moments when students are facing extreme stress. When you have a student who is having a really hard day, and that stress is getting in the way of their success and their focus and their presence in my class, you have to figure out a way of de-escalating that situation. You have to figure out a way to pull them back from where they are in that moment because you owe it to them and because every kid deserves that. And I want to offer that comparison because we do this for our students, and they matter really deeply. And I want to ask why you would not hold officers whose motto is literally "to protect and serve" to that standard? People who are not only working with students, but who are working with everyone in the community, who are going to face, I think, different challenges and have a responsibility to protect and serve everyone in Hayward and in the community? I also offer that comparison because you have kids in this room. You have students who are going to be adults really soon. They are watching you. You have an obligation to send the right message to students about what you stand for, what you value, what your responsibility is in a position you hold because we elected you and we had faith in you to protect and serve our community. And I ask that, as you navigate this case, that we're counting on you to make the right choice. Thank you.
Thank you. And please do fill a card out for the city clerk. Yeah, thank you. And also, to you, please state your name, and then please give her a card.
Yeah. My name's Steve Jacobson. I'm with the Oscar Grant Committee. I hope we're talking to people here and not just talking to a wall. I have to, I look at Petey Perez, Augie Gonzalez, Stefan Clark, all the victims of police violence, as my children, as my sons', daughters', family members. I'd like you also to maybe imagine, what if it was one of your sons or daughters or family members? What would you do? Would you be here protesting? Would you be demanding independent investigations and firing of the police? I hope so. But by doing nothing, not only you, all the city councils, all the district attorneys are complicit in murder, have blood on their hands. And worst of all, you're giving a license to the police to continuing murdering unarmed people in our community. If I was a, I could imagine a police advisor maybe advising all of you and saying, you know, you know, just let the public vent, express their anger. And, you know, our jobs are very dangerous. We make some mistakes, but please protect us. We don't want anybody being guilty because the public might lose confidence in us. So with that, I say, just imagine if it was one of your family members.
Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment? Seeing no one now, I will close public comment part of this meeting. Thank you all for coming and speaking. You have been heard. We're going to move on now to the next item on our agenda, which is... No, I think we can move on. Sorry. Which is item...
Consent calendar.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Yes, our consent calendar, items two through seven. I don't have any requests to speak, and I don't...
I'd actually like to pull three.
Number three, okay.
Marquez something.
Is there anyone who objects to the passage of items two, four, six, and seven? All right, seeing no one, we'll go back to, those items have been passed unanimously.
Mayor Halliday, would you please indicate who moved it and who did the second?
It was Councilmember Mendel moved, and who did the second? Councilmember Marquez? Marquez.
Thank you. Thank you.
And it was passed unanimously. All right, so we'll go back to item number three. That was...
Yeah, you know, I was reading the minutes, and it said the referral did not receive support. The referral regarding the increase or the rent freeze on the increases of rent. It actually did receive support, but was deferred to be discussed at the Housing Task Force.
I thought that it said...
In the minutes, it does say the referral was instead referred to the Homelessness and Housing Task Force for discussion on March 21st. So it does say that in the minutes. It does say that, but it specifically, let me pull it up so I can... I think we could clarify by saying the referral did not receive support. Just the referral did not receive support. To return to the full council and was instead referred to the Homelessness and Housing Task Force. To be discussed further. Correct. So it did not receive support to come immediately back to the full council and was instead referred to the Homelessness and Housing Task Force. Yeah, not an emergency, yeah.
All right, so we'll, with that correction, do you want to move the minutes, or do you want it to come back?
I think he had one that he pulled too.
Well, we're going to deal with this one first.
Sure. I moved the minutes.
As corrected.
As corrected, that it was not approved as a emergency, but it was approved to be discussed at the Housing Task Force.
Did you get that?
Yes.
All right, and Councilmember Marquez actually wanted to speak to that.
So from what I recall that night, there was support for your referral for a 13-month rent freeze by myself and Councilmember Salinas, but because you didn't get three nods, it was suggested to bring that topic to the Homelessness and Housing Committee on March 21st.
Yes, because...
But the action minutes, we typically do not get in that much detail, but that is what occurred, and anyone can watch the video. So I don't know what staff wants to do that, but that's my recollection of what occurred.
Thank you for that.
So do you want to repeat back what the corrected minutes would say?
So what I heard Councilmember Marquez say is that Councilmember Marquez, Councilmember Salinas, supported the referral to bring the moratorium back, but because there were not four nods for it, it was, there was three nods, so it was instead referred to the Housing and Homelessness Task Force. Yeah, and I believe that it was an emergency moratorium on that, and that's what kind of, nobody wanted to act on that that quickly except for the three. And then it was saying that the suggestion, we went through this, this is the whole 15-minute conversation, and then it was suggested to go to the Housing Committee.
So maybe you should put that in, you should work that out, and we should bring these minutes back at a future meeting.
Mayor Halliday, if I may.
Yes.
Could you state what the minutes need to be reflected, to say? Although we don't do this for action minutes, I'm going to quote what you want in the minutes, if that helps. Since we're clarifying that statement.
Actually, I was not actually at this meeting, so I think I'm going to defer to, first of all, I'm going to ask Councilmember Wahab to state what she would like seen in the minutes.
Can I make a suggestion?
Okay.
Rather than doing that again, may I suggest that you just put it in writing and submit it, and we'll bring it back next month.
Yes, let's do that. We will bring that back next meeting.
Changes like that, it makes sense to put it in.
And you work with the city clerk too. Okay, all right. So we will defer, we will move item number three, continue it to our next meeting. That would be the minutes of the February 26 meeting. And item number five, regarding the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to the agreement with ICF Incorporated for Commercial Cannabis Program Permit, Application Review Services for Round One Tier Two Applications, and increasing the compensation amount not to exceed $250,838. Councilmember Salinas.
I wanted to have this item pulled, voted on separately, so I can vote no.
Okay.
I'll move the item.
Okay. The item has been moved by Councilmember Mendel, seconded by Councilmember Marquez on the item. On the motion, I'm sorry, on the motion.
Well, I'm obviously yes, don't I?
I don't, I haven't...
Mayor Halliday.
Okay, yes, I'll vote yes. And the motion passes with six I votes and one no vote. All right, now we're going to move on to item number eight, which is an application to amend Chapter 10, Article 1, related to a proposed modification of the required setbacks for commercial cannabis businesses from certain sensitive land uses. And Chapter 10, Article 1, related to a reduction of the over-concentration buffer from 1,000 feet to 500 feet for commercial cannabis retail dispensaries of the Hayward Municipal Code in the city of Hayward, which, and I'll just now turn this over to, I guess, to Development Services Director Simpson. Will start us off on this one?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. This is being brought forward as a result of a work session that was held on January 15th, where the city council directed staff to come back and revise our, to prepare a text amendment to revise the buffer zone down to 500 feet between commercial cannabis retail dispensaries. So I have, I'll introduce Jeremy Lekirko, our principal planner, who will provide a report on this this evening. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the Hayward City Council. For the record, again, my name is Jeremy Lekirko, principal planner with Development Services Division. Before we get into the actual request this evening, I thought I would put out there some of the background information that kind of brought us to this point. As many of you are aware, in 2017, city council adopted a couple of ordinances which effectively enacted land use and regulatory cannabis regulations for operators in the city of Hayward. Since that time, there had been several municipalities around the state, and specifically around the Bay Area, that have adopted similar land use and regulatory ordinances. But given their specific circumstances, they have modified and/or eliminated some of the state's recommended buffering recommendations. While the city does have an existing ordinance that requires a separation from sensitive land uses and other retail dispensaries, the city also has adopted an RFP process that allows an independent review and evaluation of all these applications before they are submitted for land use entitlement. In January of this year, we presented the city council with a couple of options related to the selection of Tier Two applications, as well as direction on how they would like to proceed for some of those cannabis retail dispensaries. And at that time, council directed staff to process a text amendment to reduce the over-concentration buffer from 1,000 feet to 500 feet. We then took that information, we forwarded that to the Planning Commission a couple weeks ago, and they did recommend that the city council approve both text amendments as being proposed by staff. So the first amendment that you have before you is what you reviewed previous...
I'm sorry, I am going to stop you there for a minute. Councilmember Salinas wants to make a statement?
Yes, I do. I'm the executive director of the Kids Breakfast Club, which is a nutrition and education program for kids and families here in Hayward. Our office is within a 500-foot perimeter of one of the entities that we're going to be talking about. So, yeah, so I will be recusing myself.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Salinas. You can go ahead now, thanks.
Sure. So what council saw last, in January, and the entire reason why we enacted this over-concentration buffer is we wanted to limit the proximity of these dispensaries from one another in order to mitigate some potential cumulative impacts, namely as it relates to traffic, noise, potential safety issues. And certainly, when council adopted these ordinances back in 2017, with that 1,000-foot buffer, at the time, it wasn't known where the potential applications would be filed. We did find out by December of last year that all three applicants were within 1,000 feet of one another within the downtown area. And effectively, it would preclude staff from processing those without a further consideration for a reduction of that buffering requirements. The proposed text amendment, as being requested by staff, would reduce the buffer for retail dispensaries only from 1,000 feet to 500 feet, but all applicants would still be required to obtain a conditional use... to obtain a conditional use permit, which would assess any environmental, physical, or safety impacts related to the site. The map that you have before you is something that we showed to you back in January, showing the proposed locations of each of these active applications that we are currently processing. If the council takes action to approve the text amendment, all three applications will move forward in the, through processing and entitlement, and be considered by the Planning Commission and the city council at a future date. The other component that we wanted to bring before the council is a text amendment that would provide a consistent application of what is a required buffer from all commercial cannabis businesses, and it would allow the Planning Commission with the flexibility to reduce that 600-foot buffer if additional findings of necessity are made. You may recall that when we adopted these regulations, we offered that flexibility for areas around parks and open space that had children's facilities, and what we are proposing is that we would afford and extend that same flexibility for all land uses that potentially could impact children, to have a consistent land use interpretation and regulation throughout the city. We do believe that as part of the overall regulatory toolkit that was established not only by the state but by our local ordinances, in addition to the RFP process that we have developed, staff believes that the current regulatory framework is in fact sufficient to ensure that any impacts related to these sensitive land uses are evaluated and minimized as part of the use permit process. Here's a general map, this happens to be of the retail dispensaries, but these are the land use buffers that are currently being shown. The areas in the lighter gray circles are those around parks, the one in the darker are those that would pertain to what would be the state's regulatory recommendation buffer. And what we would do would be, this would not reduce those buffers, but would allow flexibility for the applicants if they did propose to locate within these buffers to make additional findings of necessity similar to what we have currently for parks. We did perform environmental review, and this, these text amendments are exempt from CEQA as an activity that is covered by the general rule. And as staff has previously noted, all cannabis operators would still be subject to the current land use and RFP process, which the council has already, has already directed staff to do, and they would all be subject to any land use entitlement process, which would evaluate individual applications on a case-by-case basis pursuant to CEQA. So with that, we would recommend council approval of the text amendments. As noted here, if council does approve, the decision will become effective and final, and second reading will be followed next week. I am available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay. I've lost my, my device temporarily, hopefully, so does anyone have any questions? Okay, Councilmember Lambden.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. So, in the regulations, let's say we see an increase of use in the library, because, you know, these are products that can be taken out of the retail establishment, and they're not allowed to use them on-site. So, let's say they start, you know, our new Heritage Plaza, or the library, or something like that. What recourse do we have as a city to work with the business owners to prevent that?
Well, and, good question, although we have, we're talking about the use permit process and going through the conditional use permit. Aside from the RFP process that we have and the use permit, we also have a commercial cannabis license that is issued on an annual basis. So if we have determined irrespective of whether or not a location has been selected, and whether or not they are meeting specific conditions of approval, if the city determines that this specific user is becoming a public nuisance, we do have the option to revoke that permit. There are revocation portions of the municipal code that do allow the staff to revoke those permits, but they are only currently good for one year.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other council questions right now, I'm going to open public comment on this matter, and I have a card from Mark Whitlow.
I'd like to thank the council for listening to me about this issue.
Could you pull the mic up? I think we could hear you better. Thanks.
Is that better?
Yes.
So, I'm a, I represent LDD Labs. We are a startup testing lab in cannabis, and looking for space. We've run into two situations where there's space in Hayward, and both of them are next to the buffer. They're down in the, one of them has passed and the other one is not. So we're in favor of this giving us flexibility to look into spaces that are, basically it's industrial laboratory space, is what we're looking for. So, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards. Is there anyone who would, anyone else who would like to speak on this matter? Come, come on forward. And go ahead and state your name and speak, and then please fill out a card for our city clerk when you're done.
Okay. Can't you just use the other two cards I filled out? No? Okay. I'll fill out another one. That's great. My name's Melissa Mallory. I work for a cannabis company in Berkeley that is also seeking a permit in Hayward. Personally, as a citizen, as a resident of this area, I see no reason for the buffer to be so large. I don't even see reason for a buffer at all. Where I live, there's an elementary school right across the street from a liquor store. And you know alcohol has many more adverse effects than marijuana. Alcohol will ruin your liver and give you cirrhosis, and you will die if you overindulge. But yet, that's okay to have that across the street from an elementary school where I live. But it's not okay for there to be two cannabis businesses within 1,000 feet of each other. And we're not just talking about dispensaries, we're talking about places where they're doing research on the medical uses of marijuana, which is what my company does, places where they might be manufacturing cannabis oil, places where they might be manufacturing end products, but they're not selling them. I don't see why it's such a big deal for them to be close to each other.
Thank you. Is that on this item?
No, we have another one.
Okay. Is there someone else with? Yeah?
Yeah. Buenas noches.
Good evening.
Mi nombre es Jesús Reynoso. Tengo 37 años viviendo aquí en Hayward.
I've lived here for 37 years.
Yo no estoy en contra que no vendan la marihuana o cualquier otra droga.
I'm not against the sale of marijuana or any other drug.
Lo que estoy en contra es que uno va en los servicios públicos y huele pura marihuana. A uno le molesta.
What I am against is going into public areas that smell like marijuana, that smell like marijuana, and it bothersome.
Aunque ellos digan, está comprobado científicamente que la marihuana duerme el cerebro.
Even though, even though there has been said that scientifically proven, it is scientifically proven that marijuana puts the brain to sleep.
Yo sé que la marihuana es medicinal.
I know it's medicinal.
Pero si esa persona las compra, pues que las consumen en su casa.
But if they buy it, they should consume it in their homes.
Porque vas en el bar, en el bar, huele igual.
Because if you go on bar, you can smell it on bar.
Entonces, yo no miro justo. Ora, yo conozco niños por la B Street que venden droga.
I know children on B Street that sell drugs.
La policía no se da cuenta.
Police don't realize it.
Yo trabajo día o noche, y estoy al pendiente de tres niños que tengo. Tengo un niño especial.
I, I work day and night, and I have, I'm three kids.
Y siempre cuando vamos a un lugar, venemos aquí a la ciudad, en el centro.
I have a special child that whenever we go downtown.
Hay olor tan fuerte de marihuana. Yo pienso que no es problema que lo vendan.
You can smell it. It's not, the problem is not that they sell it.
Pero un requisito que lo hagan en su casa, si es medicinal, yo pienso que en su casa lo pueden consumir.
But there should be a regulation that says they have to do it at home. If it's medicinal, do it at your house.
Entonces, para evitar todo eso, pues ya uno puede salir con los niños porque no sabemos ni quién es el bueno, ni quién es el malo.
It needs to be done, because we can't even go out with our kids, and now you don't know who's good, you don't know who's bad.
Yo he caminado por la furgil, caminando desde allá, pegado al freeway hasta mi casa.
I've walked freeway, from the freeway and foothill to my house.
He encontrado drogaditos. Yo no les tengo miedo.
And I've, I've found myself in contact with people that do drugs.
Que se enfrentar la situación y hablar con ellos.
I'm not scared of them, it's just to, you know, talk to them.
Pero sí da pendiente cuando los niños salen de la escuela, vengan caminando y me dicen, Tata, aquí hay mucho olor de marihuana cerca donde están haciendo la biblioteca.
But, but, you know, my kids come home walking from school, and they say, you know, I smelled marijuana over by the library.
Entonces, yo pienso que deben de hacer una forma de cómo los que consumen lo hagan no en público.
So there should be a way to have the people that do consume it, that they do it in their homes.
En cualquier lugar que te pares tú, sea arriba en el bar, abajo en el, en la plataforma, en los vagones, van consumiendo. Y traen su licencia para consumir.
Because if you go on bar, up top on the platform, within the train, you can smell it, they have their licenses with them, but.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment on this item, and I'll ask for council comment for, Councilmember Mendel.
So I just want to thank staff for bringing back this change. It does align with the previous recommendations from the council from the work session, and I'm happy to move the item.
Okay. The entire item has been moved by Councilmember Mendel and seconded by Councilmembers Armanio. I believe as in a previous instance, I would like to request that the motion be split into two motions. One, well, we've done this before, maybe not for this particular, but I'd like one motion on the changes to Section 10-1.3603B, and then a separate motion, and that, that has to do with the commercial setbacks, and a separate motion on Section 10-1.3607C, which relates to the buffer zones for retail dispensaries. So if, I think, okay, so, so, and is that fine with the seconder as well?
Yes.
Okay. So we will take up first the changes to Section 10-1.30, I'm sorry, 3603B, related to the proposed modification of the required setbacks for commercial cannabis businesses from, wait a minute, I'm sorry, that's, yeah, okay, yeah, okay, from sensitive, yes, that's true, from sensitive land uses. And I, I have asked that because I will support this one, because there is a method to look at these requests and decide, you know, whether the circumstances of the area, you know, would, would mandate that I, that the same effect could be achieved with a shorter, with a, you know, lower setback. So I would like to support that one. I, I do not support reducing the setback for the retail dispensaries. So, so we're gonna, so, is there anyone else who would like to comment? Okay, seeing no one, we'll go ahead and vote on the first one, which is the separation of commercial cannabis businesses from certain sensitive land uses.
That's a buffer zone, huh?
The 600-foot buffer zone, yes. And the motion passes with six "aye" votes, and one member recusing himself. Okay, now, we will take up the second motion, the second part of the motion, or the second item, which is the, related to the reduction of the over-concentration buffer from 1,000 feet to 500 feet for the retail dispensaries. On the motion. Can you, does your, does the system allow you to do that? Oh, good, okay.
Just for the record, it was Councilmember Mendel who moved it.
Yes, Councilmember Mendel, the same mover and seconder. Councilmembers Armanio seconded it, yes.
Thank you. Try it again.
I don't think it came up on our. And the motion passes with five "aye" votes and one "no" vote. So, thank you, everyone. Now, we're going to move on to item number nine, which is adoption of proposed revisions to the Councilmember Handbook section on Order of Business Related to Council Reports, Referrals, and Future Agenda Items. And we will hear from the city manager, Ms. McAdoo.
I'm going to wait till Councilmember Salinas returns to the dais.
Oh, sorry, yes, of course, Councilmember Salinas.
We just wanted to grab.
We do want him to, yes, thank you, okay. On back.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have a brief PowerPoint presentation that I'm going to walk through, and then we're happy to answer any questions from the council, if we can pull it up on the screen. Great, thank you. We'll head to the first slide. So just a little bit of background, on February 3rd of 2019, the council held a retreat to discuss a variety of items related to their governance as a board, and part of that retreat was a discussion of various sections of the council handbook, with interest in modifications on a variety of those, including the section on council referrals. On February 26, Councilmember Wahab made a verbal referral that her colleagues accepted to have staff review the council referral processes in other jurisdictions, seeking greater clarity. Then in March of 2019, the city clerk's office polled other cities regarding their process for council referral items, and then we brought back this item this evening. So, there is a detailed matrix that includes the cities that responded. There were 17 cities that did respond. That matrix, there's copies of that available in the back of the room, as in addition to on this PowerPoint slide, the next two slides. I'm going to just give a synopsis of what we, what we found in those conversations with the other cities, that most cities had either a verbal or written request process, eight cities had a consensus of the majority of the council before providing direction to staff during a council meeting, and six cities required a brief written memo or report in order to add a council referral to the agenda. One city, council can refer directly to staff. One city, they have a committee, the Rules and Legislative Committee, composed of the city manager, city attorney, the city clerk, and a council member. And that determines and governs how referrals get added to the agenda. And then another city has an agenda committee, which consists of the mayor and two council members, and then the council submits referrals to the committee for review. So the current procedure that's outlined in the handbook is that there is an agenda section that refers to council reports, referrals, and future agenda items. Councilmember may request that an item could be considered on a future agenda, and if a majority of the council agrees, staff would prepare a report if formal action is required. The current handbook suggests that the request can be made verbally during a meeting, or may be submitted in writing. What we've proposed is a new two-part procedure for council consideration this evening, and actually proposing to split the item into two elements. One would be the council reports section of the agenda. What this is related to is currently what we do with respect to community events or activities that are occurring. We also use this for council members to have compliance with state law and reporting for attendance at conferences and events. So we would basically separate that out from the referrals item and future agenda item topic. And so in advance of the council meeting, the recommendation is to prepare a council referral memo. And basically, this would allow for just additional clarity for the rest of the council and for the staff members from the referring council member, so that there's a better understanding of what is the policy issue, what the desired objective and outcomes are, a proposed timeline for that. And then, the, the council member who is making, who would like to make the referral would inform the city manager, so that can be placed on the council agenda. And this provides the clerk, city clerk ample time to agendize the item in accordance with the Brown Act. And we proposed, and I proposed a referral of And we proposed, and I proposed a referral of three to five referrals per council member per year, which would be a total, up to a total of 35 per year. And I purely made that recommendation to try and mitigate the impact on staff workload. Again, ultimately, that element of the referral, along with the entire procedure, is up to the council, it is part of your handbook and part of your rules of governance. The second part of the procedure would be when the council actually considers the referral. The item would be called at the council meeting, the referring council member would make a brief presentation. The council wouldn't take action on the policy issue itself, but they would only determine whether there was an interest in having further staff time spent researching the issue. And then upon the concurrence of the majority of the council, the city manager would place the item on a future agenda. That would be determined based on the time it takes staff to complete the research, the desired council timeline for returning, workload considerations, and then other items on the council calendar. And then myself and our staff would maintain a log of the referrals, so that we, it's very transparent, when the referral was made, what the projected date that it would be agendized, and then that would be available to all of the council members as part of the tentative agenda process. And that is the brief presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from council? Council member Marquez.
Thank you, mayor. Just for the sake of public information, I think we're all kinda learning as we go, and there's a lot of, you know, we tend to use acronyms up here, and I'll try really hard not to, but I just want, city manager, if you could explain for the public, I understand that the item before us is specific to referrals, but I think it's important for the public to know that the council does do priority setting, so can you briefly give an overview in terms of what that process entails?
Sure, so once a year, we typically have a retreat with the council that is open to the public. It's typically held here at City Hall on a, usually on a weekend day. And in that retreat, basically, we review the current staff work plans based on what the council has provided previous direction on, and then ask the council to brainstorm additional priorities or policy initiatives that you want to add to the workload list. Then if we get a concurrence from the majority of the council, that then that would get added to the priority list, and that becomes part of the staff work plan for the upcoming year. In the last two years, we, the council, had actually established three strategic initiatives, the Tennyson Corridor, Complete Communities, and Complete Streets. Those have a number of projects underneath them, the work plans are identified on the city's website, we've had a number of meetings to discuss those. Those two-year work plans are coming to an end this spring, so we anticipate coming back to the council in May for our priority-setting retreat this year to help lay the foundation for next year.
And those priorities and strategic initiatives, they have budget implications, correct? It's staff time, it's resources.
Correct, and we typically, once the council identifies what they believe their priorities are, then we'll come back for a second conversation around budget workload impacts. That will be a much more robust process as part of this priority-setting retreat. This year, we've tried a new effort with our departments to actually identify all of the special initiatives, special projects on the plate, and the employees that are, the level of staff effort that is needed to complete those projects, so that the council can review kind of what's already existing on the work plans.
And that is something that we vote on. The retreat is a public meeting, it's noticed, the public is welcome to attend, they're welcome to weigh in in public comments in that meeting, and then once we've identified and we have consensus on our priorities, that comes back to this body, 7 o'clock meeting and is publicly voted on, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then if one of us, any council member, has a referral, a suggestion, all of us, I think, take advantage of meeting with you one-on-one, there's nothing that prohibits us, especially if it's already aligned with the identified initiatives and priorities, to bring up referrals, suggestions to you on a one-on-one capacity.
Correct, I do meet with every council member individually, and this process would not preclude that from happening. Again, if it is a referral that I believe will take a amount, a significant amount of staff effort or time, then I will suggest that the council brings that, the council member brings that back as a referral, if it's not something that is already in the work plan or in alignment with something that's on the work plan, or if it's a policy issue that we haven't gotten direction from staff, from council on before, I make sure to bring that back to the council.
Okay, and then, I don't know if you want to take this, city attorney, city clerk, any one of you chime in, can you just define for the public, based off our city charter, which is like our constitution here within the city of Hayward, what type of governing body we are?
It's a council manager form of government.
Can you define that for the public, please?
If it were an organizational chart, the mayor and the council would be at the top, seven members, each with one vote, and beneath that would be the three council-appointed officers, city manager, the city clerk, and the city attorney. Underneath the city manager are most of the city employees, city department directors, and so on. Is that responsive?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, council member Armentio.
Thank you, I really just have one question, and I think it's related to page four, part one, section B. And I believe that what's missing there in the second line, it says, "In advance of a council meeting, the referring council member will submit a council referral memo." Two is my guess, my question is, that memo should be directed to the infrastructure committee, made up of three members plus the city manager, or should it go directly first to the mayor and then to the committee, and then eventually you probably would confer, all four of you? Is that what's missing there?
So it depends on the item, the policy issue, so what the, what I've seen in my experience with other agencies and other cities is, the memo from the colleague is directed to the mayor and the council, so it would be to mayor and council from council member Armentio. It would outline what the policy issue is, whether you would recommend that it gets referred to potentially a council committee for further discussion, could be the infrastructure committee, the sustainability committee, any of those, you know, those elements would be contained in that memo, so it would just depend on what the issue is.
Okay, and let's have a possible scenario, I want to plant fruit trees in the city of Hayward, I'll write a memo, then I give it to the mayor, she goes to the infrastructure committee, the city of Hayward really has, doesn't like planting fruit trees in our city, but what if four of us over here decided, no, it's a good idea, then we'll direct you to get staff to look into it?
Correct.
So what would happen, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, all right, that may be coming, all right.
All right, thank you. Council member Lambden.
Thank you. Just want to go back to my notes for a second here. Yes, so on the, so thank you for the work on this item and that council brought forward, and how many, so in the surveyed cities, do you have a sense of how many items tend to come through each year? Was that part of the discussion?
We didn't poll on that particular, you know, that particular process, or the number of items. I could share from my experience in a couple of the other jurisdictions that I've worked in, it's maybe 10 to 20 a year, maybe, just depends, depends on, you know, the year, the council, there's a lot of factors that go into it, but that's about typical.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I don't see any other, oh, council member Wahab.
Thank you. I really appreciate you guys doing this work, and a very quick turnaround, I believe, too. You know, I have a few questions for clarity, too. You know, I was, I was, I want to ask, why was this referral brought forth? Do you guys, were you guys clear on why?
I think you suggested it, and you had, actually, you made several comments over a series of meetings and some council meetings.
Yes.
You told me from the very start that you didn't like the process, and I think that we heard you, and I think that being a new member, we decided that you, you know, we wanted to, you know, maybe it was time to, we have had a longstanding policy, the one that the city manager has brought back is not really all that different, it just creates a little more structure around it, and that seemed to be what you were asking, so.
Thank you.
So you did, ironically, the very, you know, the very process we're talking about here, you actually used the process that we already had in place to bring this forward, and it was one where we decided, first of all, that it did not take a lot, it took some city staff time, but it's not something that they're having to work on for months, they did some research, and they put together some proposals, which we can discuss, and so I think that was one where we all agreed, that is an example of how this process would work.
Thank you. So, the real reason why I brought this up, and you know, I, at the very beginning, the nods, so, council, just for clarification, the nods, the four nods that they've been operating, and this handbook has been created in 1983, before I was born. And the four nods is basically during the referral section, a referral is, would you guys like to explain what a referral is?
It's basically direction to the city manager to have staff research an item.
That, or to bring up an item to have future discussion on, to put it on the agenda and bring it back and potentially vote, study the issue, understand the issue, move forward with an issue, okay? And the way that it has been taking place in the city of Hayward for God knows how long, four nods, this, not a vote, okay? No transparency, no accuracy, no reliability, I would not even be able to say who nodded. And, you know, I am so happy that the Gonzalez family are still sitting here, because it actually stemmed from the January 15th meeting. I never agreed or approved this particular four nods policy because it lacks transparency, accuracy, reliability, and I'm not about that. So on January 15th, if you guys remember, it was the time that you guys all came here, and I made a referral for in-depth mental health and de-escalation training. It was nodded, okay? So, on February 5th, 2019, council unanimously approved the minutes that reflect the nods, okay, unanimously approved, yes, mental health, right? And then on February 19th, again, when you guys came here, and I asked, why can't we talk or give notice that we will be reviewing the mental health and de-escalation training process? And I was told that not all your council members see eye to eye. I was surprised, because basically a month passed, right? Not a single person brought it up to me. Now, they stated when I brought it up in referrals, referrals, the reason why it's being separated now is because it's commentary, as well as announcements, as well as referrals, all in one section currently, today, that's the process now. So I brought it up for full transparency to the public, and I said that, you know, this is, I'm a little surprised, I just wanted clarification. And council all smiled at me and said, no, you asked for data. And I had to go back and double-check what I really asked for, I had to review the meeting video, and the, on February 25th, so a week, from February 19th to the 25th, we had back-and-forth emails, the city manager and I, to say whether or not it was a genuine referral. It was. I have the emails to prove it, I have the video to prove it, and I have the minutes that was unanimously approved by council with in-depth mental health training and de-escalation. So on February 25th, the following week, after all this, it was reluctantly agreed that it was a referral, tapes and minutes approve it, and then on February 26th, I informed the council that, hey, just FYI, I just want to be fully transparent, my referral was a referral. And what I asked specifically was very simple, not this current process that's being recommended to us today, not at all, I will go down the list with you. I specifically asked for maybe a one-pager, you know, city manager and I have spoken during our one-on-ones for the past couple months about how not transparent this process is. And she suggested, in her previous positions, that she has seen a memo being released, and I said, yeah, that's great, I actually support it, because if we are gonna make a referral, we should know what we're trying to achieve, right? A one-pager is fine with me. However, other council that are studied potentially have more staff dedicated to them. And I want to clarify, the retreat, this priority-setting retreat that keeps getting pushed back, that I've been asking for too, also only happens once a year. So, you know, one of the concerns that I genuinely had was that if the council makes a referral, and again, just a topic for discussion, it's being brought up, council can still say no to it. Every single week, I don't like that, I don't want to plant a eucalyptus tree in this man's backyard, they can say no. So that, the reason why we are elected is to represent the people. If I told Congress to only have a retreat for once a week for the entire year, how useless is our government? How useless is our representatives? That's the reality of it. And as it was mentioned, it's a direction towards staff, and I respect staff workloads, I respect staff's time and the budget, I genuinely do. No referral I made at all was hidden from the city manager. I have emailed her, I have informed her, I've talked to her about every single referral I plan on making. And the situation, the reason why that this particular system is really, really inappropriate, 100% inappropriate, is primarily because, you know, I've made roughly about, and I was a little surprised that this was actually a referral, to be honest, I didn't even realize that, is I'm at full capacity, I've made five-plus referrals, so that means my hands are tied for the rest of the year, okay? Wow, right? And if this is a new process, this is a new process. Two months into me sitting here and making these referrals that people say that they talked about for years, where's the referral? Where is the vote? That is what I'm upset with.
You know, I will have to say that, do you have a question?
Yes, I have actually a couple of questions.
We have speakers who would like to speak on this item.
Do we have an ad hoc committee?
Yes, could you repeat that? I couldn't hear what you said.
Okay, so, the summary states that, and I quote, "to provide further clarification," that was the reason why this referral was brought up, "and consider some modifications," correct?
Correct.
So I know that I requested for a vote and a one-pager, however, the recommendation is very different, why is that?
Well, that wasn't part of the referral that you made on February 26th, you had asked for us to survey other cities and to provide some clarity. And so we surveyed other cities and brought forth a recommendation, ultimately, the council can decide what they choose to do with this policy.
This is your chance to, you know.
Thank you. So, so the four nods policy, how long has that been there?
It's been there at least eight years. I've been here with the city eight years, and it's been here the entire time I've been here, and probably for a number of years before that.
So, besides myself, it was quoted, "Some council members expressed an interest in reviewing the council referral process as soon as possible, given perceived concerns about the Brown Act." Which council members?
I believe it was after we received the letter from the Rental Housing Association indicating that the council had violated the Brown Act, that we did discuss that in closed session, and so there was a desire from the council to bring that back.
In closed session?
And also in conversations I had with the council.
So the conversations you had with individual council members, that's behind the scenes, correct? That's not public, so if they're talking about an item that's agendized today, is that not a violation of the Brown Act?
No, I'm not, I'm, I'm not an elected member of the body, I'm allowed to individually meet with each council member, answer their questions about the agenda, there's been actually litigation that has proven out that the council, the city manager can meet with individual council members, talk about items on the. individual council members, talk about items on the agenda, provide information and input, and that is not a violation of the Brown Act. As long as I don't share what other council members are saying to me, which I am very careful not to do that.
Great. Now, when we actually made this referral, who on this council voted for it? Are you able to absorb that?
I'd have to go back and look at the video.
The video, yes, because there's no votes. Now, this bypassed the ad hoc committee with a quick turnaround, yet my equal pay that was asked on January 8th is still not even hitting subcommittee. So why was this such a quick turnaround?
Because myself and the assistant city manager worked on the staff report personally, and we are not, you know, we have the knowledge to do that. With the equal wage ordinance, there's a different staff that has a different workload. Also, given the concerns about the Brown Act violations, I wanted to bring it back sooner than waiting for the ad hoc committee to review it.
Out of the 18 cities that were surveyed, do any of them have a limitation on how many referrals can be brought by each council member?
We did not ask that question in the survey.
Because it does not? So, every city is unique, correct?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear your question.
Was this, this wasn't an emergency referral though, correct?
Oh, there's no such thing as an emergency referral.
Or the urgent referral that we did for the just cause?
That's different, that's an urgency ordinance, it's not, it's not an urgency referral, there's no such thing.
So, I'm consistently told about workload and prioritizing staff time, you just stated that you personally worked on this recommendation?
Correct.
Okay. And what are the, you stated the council's existing priorities online, it's safe, clean, green, and thrive, correct?
And the strategic initiatives, which are complete communities, complete streets, and the tennis court corridor, which has a number of projects underneath there.
During the budget committee that I sit on, there are also six other council goals, are you aware of that?
I'm not sure exactly what you're referring to.
The last meeting, we had six goals that we talked about that I specifically asked during that meeting, is this the city council's goals or the city as a whole?
Is that referring to the mayor council budget page?
Yes.
So that's each year, that's a little different, it's for the mayor and council in the departmental budget, each department budget identifies goals and objectives that feed into the council's priorities. So those individual bullet points on that mayor and council budget page should be consistent with what the council's priorities are.
So, goal number five says responding to residents' requests and community requests. Would you not think that a referral that council makes would be based on a request from the community?
I get lots of those referrals, they come in almost daily, from each and every one of you, which we refer to the appropriate staff. That is not a policy direction or a policy change, the council referral process is more about major policy direction versus my sidewalk is broken, I need a tree replaced, it's a very different, that's a very different request.
Understood, thank you. Do you, you mentioned in the recommendation, section 705 of the city charter, I understand it that I am required to CC you on all emails with communication with staff, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And in regards to CCing, are you overloaded by any chance on all the emails that you get from seven council members?
There is a lot of emails, that's why I ask you to copy my executive assistance so I can track those.
All right. And out of those 18 cities, most of the line items said only one city does each item. And it also allows for the referral to be brought up on the day of, correct?
I think each city had a different process, so most, if you are actually preparing a written report, that legally needs to be provided in the agenda packet, it can't be brought up on the day of, if it was a verbal request, it could be brought up on the day of.
Would we be able to see the presentation you just showed us with the list of the cities?
Sure, it's also, it should be at your places, it was a handout that has the matrix, it's also copies.
I'd like it for the viewership.
Yeah, sure.
Verbal requests during meeting, during meeting, during meeting, informational, written. Now, do these cities have dedicated policy staff members?
No, not, for example, I'm sure Albany doesn't because it is such a small city. I know in Palo Alto, where I used to work, there is not dedicated policy staff for council members, the council members would write their own memos, so I would assume that similar, for some of the smaller cities, for example Fremont also, that is, they don't have individual staff for council members, so that's also a written report.
Okay, but cities like Dublin, San Leandro, it's a verbal request during the meeting, correct?
Correct. Which is what the council's current policy is.
So, I'm done with my questions for the most part, I genuinely, genuinely believe that there is a miscommunication here, and the current recommendation is something that I'd like to go into further as well.
That's why we're here, and it's, I'd direct you to certainly look closer at the city charter, but I will open the public comment, excuse me, I will open the public comment on this item, and we'll start with Aracely Orozco.
Ms. Wahab, thank you, thank you so much for being our voice. Thank you. We need people like you. This is what, and if you guys missed it, this is what transparency means. This is what it is. Thank you for that educational, wow, I learned a lot. Every single time you speak, I write notes and I learn a lot from you. I admire you, thank you for having that backbone that most of you do not have, do not have. You guys need to grow a backbone, that's what we need in this council, that's what we need, this is what the city needs. Have a voice. It's okay to go against the current, to serve the people that elected you. It's okay. Good things will come out of it, I promise you. I ask you not to vote for that. All I've heard today, I'm, actually, I'm just speechless. But I will remember who supports this or not. The city will remember too, and trust me, I will be out there.
We will be out there.
Thank you. We will be out there, walking the streets and getting signatures.
Well, she falls off there.
And if we have to do a recall, you know what, we will do it, because we're sick of it. We are just so sick of it, we need people like her to represent us.
Thank you. Eduardo Orozco.
Good evening, everybody, and I'd just like to say the same thing, council member Wahab, thank you for being our voice, thank you for staying true to your campaign promises, thank you for the transparency, and thank you for teaching us, the community, what really is happening behind, behind papers and behind what they tell us, they never tell us anything like this. You know, I have some kind of communication with my good friend, council member Zermeño in the Facebook, he's very active, and I like it. And he recommended me to read the whole referral, he said, maybe you have some time to read it, maybe you can understand it better. And I say, you know what, I read the whole thing. And I told you, you know, I'm very concerned because every time that we talk about it, it's like I have the feeling that you guys work for the city manager. Yeah, it is. I read the whole thing and I can just go page through page, but you know what, this is, this is beautiful, this is gonna, please put it out there. You know, in the little, in the little, making this a little smaller, this is exactly what is happening. And I told you, and my friend, Zermeño, I say, are you really, are you ready to give the city manager this much power that is gonna, that is gonna, that is gonna hold you guys just to three, or max five referrals to it? You know, this is unbelievable, I can't believe this. You know what, and what really, really worries me is that we were talking about referrals and council members, Zermeño, say, you know what, in the past years, nobody has made any referrals, and I say, you know what, really? So then what are you doing there? So then we don't need you. So then if the council members have not made any referrals, so why don't you just guys, take you out of there and we deal directly with the city manager? Because to me, since like you guys are dancing to the music that she's playing. And you know what? Truly, I mean, the only person here that really has been our voice for the community, council member Wahab, thank you so much, thank you. So, you know what, this is a recommendation from the city manager, my recommendation is this, reject this, this is gonna just tie your hands, if you approve something like this, it's gonna, your own hands are gonna be tied, and then you're gonna regret, you're gonna say, well, you know what, we agreed to that, we voted for that.
Thank you, thank you.
So reject this, thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask council, I'm going to ask council members, Zermeño, did you actually say that none of the council members make referrals? Because as I recall, you've made quite a few referrals, some of which we have passed on, some of which we have not, but I just wanted to know if he perhaps didn't understand that you actually said that no council members make referrals?
I stated that in my 11 years, I don't recall doing many referrals, agenda items, yes, but I made the difference between a referral and agendizing.
Well, I think that's what we're talking about here, is those agenda item referrals. And, you know, I will say, just recently, we actually enacted a new policy regarding no-cause eviction as an urgency ordinance based on a referral from council member Marquez. So, that, so we have definitely made referrals.
Just to clarify, just to clarify, it was a conversation that we have, and he said in the past, no one has made any referrals, and I say, well, maybe in the past, they called it somewhere else, or something else, a referral, a comment, or whatever it is.
We have all made referrals, and some of them have gotten approved by council, so we have had this policy in place for a number of years.
And just for transparency, if any of you have any doubt, I have my phone here and you can see it.
Okay, thank you, and I'm gonna call Melissa Mallory.
Okay, this is the real reason I'm here tonight. So, I see in this work that you did, city manager, is it McAdoo? Okay, see if I can pronounce names correctly. Okay, so you surveyed all these cities, asking them how they conduct their referral processes, you did not ask any of them if they limit council members on the number of referrals, none of them said anything, there's nothing on your chart here about limiting the number of referrals. You spent all this time and all this public money with staff time paying people to do this research, and then you brought a referral that meant, you bring in this report and you say, I recommend that we limit referrals, why? What do you have to back it up? You have nothing to back it up, no data, no information from any other city to back it up? That's ridiculous, okay? I see verbal request, you need to submit a memo, okay, great, I can write you a memo in 30 minutes, I'd be happy to do that if I were a council member. Okay? I think anyone on the council will be happy to submit a memo about a referral they want to make before the city.
That is the city manager's recommendation, but day of.
Can I have my time back that the mayor just overspoke over me, please? I'm sorry, but I have been in here watching you speak over the public comments, watching you limit the public comments even at one meeting so that people were not granted the three minutes that it says on your speaker card that you're supposed to get, but then you just said, while councilwoman Wahab was speaking, you told her she needs to be considerate of the public speakers who are here to speak before the council. Why do you respect our time when it's something you don't like, but when the public wants to speak about Augustine Gonzalez, you want to limit them to two minutes or one minute? I was here, I saw that happen. Okay, so, I would ask that you do not approve this. Limiting the number of referrals that council member can make ties all of your hands. And instead of being upset or petty about councilwoman Wahab being so successful with her referrals, or getting so much attention from the public, you should be inspired. You should be inspired that she wants to make change in the community, okay? And don't laugh because she got the most votes in the election. Okay? And so this retreat, when did the retreat happen, was it in November? She did receive the most votes. Okay, I'm getting like, I get 20 seconds at least more, okay, because you keep interrupting. So, all I'm saying is that you should be inspired, okay? She got all these votes, she's trying to do what the public is asking you to do, I have been here for months while the Gonzalez families asked you to respond to them about their request to you for justice for Augustine, and you say, we can't talk about it, it's not on the agenda. And so the referral is how you get something on the agenda, and now you're trying to limit that. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Martha Krieger.
Thank you for hearing me, mayor and council. I was very concerned with this because you have a number of really important days coming up in the next year. If you limit people in their number of referrals, they can't offer referrals on really important agenda items like the census, for example. If we undercount on the census, even by 3%, it costs us $1 billion over a year, 10 years. We know that, right? So, there's gonna be a lot of information that comes in before you, and you guys will need to have someone that you can say, hey, go investigate this, pull it up, let's have a discussion. The mental health issues, I just want to say one thing, is Louis still here?
Louis.
So, I worked with mental health for seven years with teenagers. 50% of our schools have high levels of depression, anxiety, and cutting. 42, 51, 50s happened in my high school. In two years, when we took that under consideration and really worked on that, we got that down to five. There's mental health issues in my family, I am so grateful for what you said. I am so grateful because families don't want to call 911. And I so appreciate the fact that you're even looking into that, because those kids grow up, and they're bigger than we are, and we have a tough time, and we don't want to call someone if they're gonna shoot them. And that's what we're afraid of. And I really appreciate you, and I just wanted to thank you for that. So, if you're limiting people on the number of referrals they can bring, they cannot represent their constituents. We elect them to get them to represent us, and you are actually taking your charter, which, believe it or not, I read, okay? And you have a balance, I did, it wasn't that long, it's like 38 pages. There's a balance and power between the mayor and the city council, between you guys, and the administrator. And that's the way it should be, but if you push that power over, it's not balanced anymore. It's a checks and balance thing, and that's really what's happening in the country, we're out of balance. So I would really ask you to think about whether or not you're gonna put this into writing, put it into rules, and move it over, because it's hard to move it back once you do that. And we elected Sarah, and we elected Aisha, and what I'm saying is that that's a reason we did that, so that you could actually pay attention not just to one community, but to all the communities. Don't limit your own power. Don't limit your own voices, because you all hear them. We need to keep hearing from you, you need to keep hearing from us, it needs to be a transparent process. And I really want you to think about that before you jump off that cliff.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Scott Moore.
Thank you for hearing me tonight, my name is Scott Moore, I've been a resident of Hayward.
for 27 years. I urge you not to accept the recommendations of the, the city manager. There's a number of reasons. You've heard a lot of them here tonight. I'm gonna reiterate some of them, but I think there's a couple I might point out. We, first of all, you've heard over and over again, we vote for you. We rely on you to represent us. We didn't get a chance to elect the city manager. I respect the role that the city manager plays. But we need you to be able to make referrals for these important issues that are facing our city and facing us. The, I think that, one of my concerns is the background information that was made available regarding this report doesn't cover what was clarified here tonight, particularly the NOD issue. And I think that if there's such a miscommunication, that making a decision to rewrite the city handbook in any way, based on what seems to be very clear miscommunication, take time to take a step back and clarify it and come up with a better proposal. The, the other thing that I would say is, again, it was said before, I raise that issue again. If the concern, or if there was no effort to find out how referrals are made, or the number, or if there are limits on them, why did that come up as an issue? There's a disconnect. And again, it's a miscommunication that should be rethought. And this proposal, this recommendation shouldn't be accepted tonight. Specifically to the limitations on the number of referrals. I work in online community management, and I've done it for 25 years. I know unintended consequences when you provide limited access to things. If everyone has five, and that's not, and it's per council member, you're gonna create an underground economy of politicking to negotiate who gets to borrow somebody else's referrals during the year. And none of us want something like that. And you're not gonna want something like that. So the idea of having a per member is bad. The idea of limiting the referrals, I think is generally not viewed kindly by, by the council, or by the, by the citizens here tonight. And so I recommend, I hope that you will not approve this recommendation tonight, and that you will go back and you will take another effort at it, and that we'll see another effort to have a clear and transparent process from the city manager. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a question for you. Councilmember Lamnan has a question for you.
Hi, thank you for your comments. Briefly, you mentioned moderating online discussion?
More designing and building and fostering, yes.
Okay. So briefly, can you comment on, it happens in online discussions that one, one voice will get louder than other voices. And it, I'm talking about kind of crowding out. So how does, how, and I know there are techniques, and I'm guessing you have some of them. So could you give me one or two of how you've designed that, so, to give some even voice?
Right. So what I'm specifically referring to is, when you create a reward system, and you limit that reward system per person, you then create an underground economy that creates value for that, right? So that was what I was referring to.
Right. I just wondered if you had a comment on this other.
Again, when there is, but the potential for one person to speak up and hold forth, you can build a process around where you make that more democratic. It's not a, you get five minutes for a year. It's a, okay, now it's somebody else's turn. And so there are processes, I think, that the council could review if you feel that there are, if the city manager feels that they are overloaded with the number of referrals. Feedback from the city manager saying, we're overloaded, can you reprioritize your proposals? This is how we, this is how I do it when we're developing and creating software products or whatever. This is project management. And a similar thing can occur when you're working with, again, you're in the same situation I've been in lots of times. You have a lot of people who want to say something. We have a three-minute limit. But we've had people who've been able to come up here any number of times tonight. There's no hard limit. There's no limit on how many times I can come up to this podium. Right? And there's a process that's fair and transparent.
It's limited by the number of items on the agenda, but yes, you're right.
Right. But that agenda item, but those, but there's not a set number of agenda items per year. Right?
That's correct also. Thank you. Okay, Annie.
Hello. I've got a question. I know that you're not allowed to answer questions on certain things, but hopefully can you think about this one in your head? Why the heck do you want this? I understand why Kelly McAdoo wants it. I've got a hunch that she wants puppets. But why the heck do you want this? You wanted to be representatives. You ran for office to be representatives, to represent we the people. The whole point of city council is so you can represent we the people, not so Kelly McAdoo can control what even ends up on the agenda. The fundamental fact is you cannot vote on what is not on the agenda. And you cannot make change unless you vote on things. Seriously, think about this. This is ridiculous. If each council, sorry, if each congressperson could only introduce one bill, no, I'll be generous, five bills a year, this would be ridiculous. We would call this not democracy, and we all, all of us would have a problem with it. Why can't we have a problem with it when it comes to this city? If we would have a problem with it when it comes to nation. Thank you. Unelected Kelly McAdoo should not control what ends up on the agenda. You, each and every one of you should control what ends up on Hayward's agenda because Hayward elected you. You were elected to do just that. You do not, you do not work for Kelly McAdoo. You work for we the people. Mayor Halliday, look me in the eyes. Thank you. You do not work for Kelly McAdoo. You work for we the people. Councilmember Wahab seems to know this. Do the rest of you? I honestly don't know. Kelly McAdoo, none of these people work for you. Do you know that? I seriously don't think she knows it. I don't. Thank you. Counsel, do not vote to strip away, counsel, do not vote to strip away your own power. You have power because we the people elected you to have power. Do not take your own power away. Because then each and every one of your constituents who voted for you will have less power to control their own destiny. You are the representatives that control our destiny, that control all the people in Hayward's destiny. Do not take that power away and give it to somebody who is unelected. Do not give that power to Kelly McAdoo. Give it to us. Give it to we the people. This is what you were elected to do. Do your job. Thank you.
Cynthia Nunes.
Hello again. I'm, I'm a little confused by this whole referral process as, one, why this, I guess, referral itself is so sloppily put together. If you're looking to change, then why wouldn't you look into how many of these other cities are limited to? It doesn't make any sense to me that you would only look up their process, but not look up, if you want to have a limit, why wouldn't you check if other cities have a limit? Seems silly to me. Also, question for the council, how many referrals are y'all at? Because are any of you at your limit besides councilmember Wahab? No? Anyone?
We haven't established a limit.
Okay, so if, if this was passed, are any of you at the three to five mark as of now?
In a year's period, which is what we're talking about.
This year, this year, are you at your limit? It's a simple question.
Well, it's very early in the year. So no, I don't think we are.
So, so this seems almost discriminative towards Ms. Wahab here, because she's the only one that's at that mark that you're trying to set. How does that make any sense to you? Also, why would you want to get rid of your own voice? Like, she, as mentioned, was not elected. Like you were, we voted for you to be our voice. Why would you want to silence yourself? By voting for this, you're literally shutting yourself up. Also, if you're upset that she's actually making a change, she's like a new energetic person that we elected that's actually helping our community, if you're so upset, or I guess jealous, it seems like, that she's doing more, then fucking step up and do something. Like, she doesn't have to do all of this. She's doing it because she's actually listening to people. So why don't you do that? And it won't be an issue. Also, if you vote for this, then you're shutting her up for the rest of the year, which is not what we voted for. Like I said, this is very sloppily put together. I think in the long run, I think you all will probably regret this. But it just does not seem very fair to councilmember Wahab, because it literally seems like it was aimed straight at her, since nobody else is at that limit. Seems silly to me. So, thank you.
Thank you. Lacy Amodai.
Okay, hello. I'll be quick. I know I already sent you a letter. I really urge everyone to vote no. And, and you know, you know, sometimes we need a little bit more ceremony for Malde, but let's be honest. Everyone, this is not about like the typical business that a, that a city does. We all get that. There's more involved plans that are not controversial at all. That's not what this is about. This is about councilmember Wahab taking direct action and putting something before you all that the public supports. So I was actually starting to listen to councilmember Lamnan's, I was kind of reading into your metaphor about equalizing voices. And I don't know if you meant it that way, but I hope you didn't mean to say that, like referrals like that raise to the top. Because if that's the case, it's the raising of the top because they're getting the public support. And that's how it should work. So, so again, just to be honest, as you can hear, people who are here at 10:20 at night to talk about a referral process, this is not about a cleanup job of a pretty mundane aspect of city, you know, of city planning. That's something aside from what we're talking about. And what I read this into this is not that people are willing to silence themselves. I think what I read into this is that people don't want to be put on the record for these more, less, well, it would involve you taking political risks to go on record as far. So. Sorry. Right. So, but for example, but for you, councilmember Mendel, like us as activists, like we have to put together like a Rubrik's Cube to figure out what your positions are, not on normal, like routine things. Again, that's aside from this. But on things such as a rent freeze. Your visitors have been pretty clear on just looking at the housing aspect. But for councilmember Semenyo, councilmember Lamnan, councilmember Salinas, we actually have to compare notes. And we couldn't figure out where you actually all stood on those basic actions until councilmember Wahab put it in front. And, you know, people had to voice their opposition. And then I finally said, okay, I finally understand where people stand. So for me, this is what it's about. It's about taking those kind of issues and saying, oh, it's now on the city manager, when in fact, it's not. This just allows those kind of issues not to have to take place here in front. So again, I would see a vote for the proposal as is, to be that, basically that mechanism, just to keep everything behind doors, closed doors, to stop the possibility that someone can put up a referral that's not about like a typical business of a city, but something that's an urgent need that the community supports, but that would take political courage and possibly take some members, maybe not all, taking a hit from some of their moneyed constituents. So I'm gonna see how you guys vote, but this seems really anti-democratic, and seems to be quashing things like the mental health de-escalation referral, tenant protection referrals, and other referrals that are in that realm. The things that people are willing to stay here until 10:30 or 9:00 for.
Thank you. The card from someone named Hector.
Good evening. As an individual, I always like to be informed. Unfortunately, I'm not as informed about this subject as I wish I was. But what it seems to me, if you think about it, when we go to work, our managers or our companies will tell us, okay, pick five tasks you're gonna focus on for the week. And then that's the limit of tasks that you're gonna do. Because if there's a fire emergency where, you know, something comes up, and everybody's up at their, their max, then what's gonna happen? You know, it's not gonna get done. So I don't agree with this limit on referrals. Another thing also, I don't know if there's more information out there, but I had a question about the referral, about what she mentioned, city manager. She mentioned the workload, I guess, is too heavy. But neither, none of the slides did I see any budgets of how much it costs for the workload, for the extra workload. So is there any, any budgets of, or any dollar amounts of how much it is to have extra work?
It would depend on the issue, because each is unique, and we'd require an analysis of how much staff time to take to research it. So it would be impossible without knowing all the referrals for the year.
Right. But I mean, sorry, I mean, if you, if you are suggesting something, then you should have a number in mind of how much it's gonna cost to get, have extra help for the extra workload, I believe. I didn't see anything in any of the slides, so I don't know if you have any numbers available. That'd be good for us to know, since you're saying that the workload is a little bit too heavy. Also, another thing that I had, I was thinking about is, it was mentioned that the referrals can go into a future agenda. How far would that agenda be? Would that be within a month, a year, or two years, or would it eventually just disappear? Is there a set of, how far would it go into the next agenda? Do you have anything in mind?
Mayor, do you want me to respond to questions or wait till the end?
Why don't you just finish, and we'll try to respond.
Okay. Well, if you can respond to that one. But just to finish up, I don't think this is a good idea. Everybody else that went before me had very valid points and very good points. And I think it is a way of, you know, tying your hands, all seven of you. So I just don't agree that you guys should vote on this to continue. And I hope you can answer, you know, the question that I had.
Yes, I think that we will go on and complete the public comment, and then try to get to answering some of those questions that you had when we get to our comments.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Luis? Luis Buckhiero.
Eight years of NODs, wow. That's a bomb. I mean, if it was that easy, we could fill this whole freaking room with bobbleheads. You know? That's ridiculous. I mean, not even letting the public know about that. When she dropped that bomb, my heart dropped with it. In shame, but not shame for me, but for you guys. I felt that for you guys. Wow. Every time you see that flag, when you say your pledge of allegiance, I mean, let you know what those colors mean. I mean, red, a lot of people say the blood of the soul that decorate that. That's an add-on. White signifies purity and innocence. You guys screwed that one up already. Blue. Vigilance, perseverance, and justice, which she just gave us in a quick few sentences of minutes of talking. Red, valor. Valor. For the people that I know that didn't come back from that. It's a shame. It's a, for us to come, we don't ask for nothing coming back from things, veterans, don't ask for nothing. We just want our little peace, justice. That's it, to live our lives. To find out that that's how business is conducted here in Hayward, and I moved here from LA back in 97. Shame, that's what I felt for you guys. You guys have to do better. If not, get the fuck out of here. Sorry for my language, but leave. Just leave. Every time you see that flag, you do the pledge of allegiance, you remember what those colors stand for.
The next card is from Carla.
That's Florida, mayor.
Well, with the incident with my son, it brought me into politics. Okay? Because I was someone that, I didn't care about politics. I didn't like to watch the news. So I'm a little confused. So referrals, from what I'm understanding, and some of my family have the same thinking that I did, so some got cleared up. Referrals mean that you need to refer something that you would like to make our city better, Hayward better, right? Is that what that means?
Yes.
So. How many of the city councils members are new this year? I know you are. How many, everybody else has been on the, on the bench or board, or whatever you guys want to call it. Is that right?
Yes. Yes.
So, you guys have been, so, you guys don't really care if there's change in your city, that you guys want to limit referrals? So, do we need more energetic people like her to come on? Because this is really, after fighting for justice for my son and then listening to stay in here and listen to this, that you guys limit referrals of your city to make it better?
Mayor, we need to move on.
I don't understand that. Can you guys explain that to me? I mean, are you guys just sitting back there for pay? I mean, because it is a nice paycheck, I gotta say. You guys all make really good money for the year. So, I mean, is that what you guys are really here? Because I thought the people put you guys there to help this city. And I was raised in, you know, in Hayward. Yes, I moved out, because unfortunately, house of living is just too expensive for me. I worked two jobs, my husband works two jobs, you know, and we still can't make it to live in the Bay Area. But you guys can and make a change and feel better about yourself. And you guys, all you guys are petty about how many referrals the new energetic person has.
What happened to Hayward, though?
I mean, I don't understand that. And then, I'm sorry, Kelly, for you to do research, and the main question is, is how many referrals someone should have, you don't put it in your, in your, in your research. I don't get that either. And budget, about somebody actually going to go do the work. Everybody has a budget. I mean, we, I work in a hospital. We review budgets every year. Do we need more people? I mean, I work in the medical field, so we always need more nurses, more CNAs, more everything. So, of course, we're going to up our budget, because, okay, we need this and we need that. So, if you guys need that, why don't you guys put it up? I mean, come on. I'm sorry, Kelly, to bring you up again, but $247,000 a year. Seven percent! Seven percent! And you can't take a couple percentages of that and get another body to help you guys do a research to make the city that you guys are sitting for better? Then why are you guys here? Do you guys all live in Hayward?
We have to.
You have to live in Hayward. So, do you live in like, high hills Hayward?
I am sorry, your time is up. And we will try to answer some of those questions, I'm sure, in our, in our comments. And then, Iman Sedig.
More than nice to see you here, Mayor.
Hello again. It seems to me that the city manager, McAdoo, is violating our, your First Amendment rights, actually. She's, she's, she's limiting your elected official, she's, sorry. Let me start over. She's limiting our elected officials from speaking. How can any of you contemplate this process? I urge you to vote no on this process. It limits each of you from doing the work that needs to be done here in Hayward. Just in case you forgot, we voted for you. And you work for us. The cities that you have researched, why did you pick those cities? And please, don't insult our intelligence by stating that one city does this or one city does that. Do all of these cities that you guys included, do any of these combine all the processes that you guys have here? Do they limit city council members? Do they make, do they wait for their city manager? And when it, excuse me, do they wait for their city manager and when it's convenient for her to put an item on the agenda? Probably not. Again, this is outside your role, city manager. Mayor and council, please vote no on this ridiculous process. From what I have heard, Councilwoman Wahab asked, is, is this page a one memo describing, is it describing the referral? And raise your hand or click the buttons on your computers to vote. Moving forward, please ask for clarification before you waste any of the money for developing such processes. Again, I urge you to vote no on this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment and I will entertain council comments or a motion. Councilmember Lambnens.
We're all taking a deep breath here. At least I am, I'll speak for me. So, I have some comments on the proposal on the table, but I want to respond briefly, because there were some questions raised. It is really unfortunate that this process, that was intended, from my perspective, I'll speak for me, that when I asked and nodded to have a review, I appreciate Councilmember Wahab bringing forward the idea that our four nods policy needed to be reviewed. That was a good thing. We absolutely did. It was not a, it was not transparent. It did not allow for the public to comment on that. It did not allow for the public to know that that was what was going to be brought up. And it did, and because it's a Brown Act violation to discuss it, when somebody says, I want to change whatever it may be, without, there's no way to clarify, well, are you asking for this to apply in this way? Or are you asking for it to happen in that way? What's the research that you're referencing that that's the right answer? There's no room for that. And so, for me, the idea of having a process that allows us to do that and allows the public to comment on it before we decide whether or not we're going to redirect your tax dollars to go take care of it, felt really awkward. And I'm glad that we're having a process to do that. It is profoundly unfortunate that somehow this idea of bringing more transparency to council process has become an attack on our city manager. This was council's decision to bring forward. What is before us is an idea in the way that we do everything. We rely on the expertise of our staff and then it is up to us as council to make the decision. And so, I won't make a motion yet. I will allow my colleagues to weigh in. But I will have some comments on the recommendation, on the proposal before us tonight. Let's see. Sorry, just looking at my thoughts here. That, I think overall, this is a good recommendation. I appreciate the separating of reports from referrals. I made some recommendations in our council questions about language to distinguish between a referral that is about kind of a routine matter that is already in the budget, sidewalk repair, potholes, et cetera, kind of things that could also be handled through Access Hayward, separate from things that are major policy direction. I think that in the memo, the idea to have strategic initiative, how does this relate to strategic initiatives, council priorities, or city strategic goals, is also helpful to give us all context. And to give us all context, the whole point is that we spend a lot of energy to give direction for the city staff to respond to the community. How unfair is it that we say, we spend all of that energy, and then we say, oh, but wait, do that and do that other thing and this other thing that we haven't talked about before? Now, that's not to say that things don't emerge over time. You know, during our last priority setting, councilmember Marquez brought up housing and rental housing and housing affordability, and we must make this a priority. And we did, but we thought, well, it's okay, it can fit in with other things. Well, it turns out that that was exactly the highest priority and we've spent a ton of energy on it. We're not done yet. And I would be really mad at my elected official who said, okay, so you're almost done with that, but you know what? I want you to do three other things instead of that. So, I want us to have a clear, transparent process that is well thought out and allows us to prioritize what we're doing and what you've asked us to do. With that, I'll yield the floor for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mendel.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Lambnens, those were really excellent comments and I appreciated every single one of them. So, a couple things. First, we were asked a couple of questions. I'll go ahead and answer, asked how much we make. My salary is $25,000 a year. You were asked where we live in Hayward. I live in the flatlands in South Hayward. I think most of us live in the flatlands. A little bit of context here. I have been on this council for almost seven years and in my time here, I have made hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of referrals. They have been implemented, most of them. Many of them have been discussed and debated and implemented. That is my job, to put my ideas out there. I get that. Here's the thing, every single member up here gets that and every single one of us do it, which is why Councilwoman, City Manager McAdoo gets so many emails from us on a regular basis, because we're all making referrals all the time. Here's the thing, there are about 20 different ways, for me as a council member, to get an idea heard and to put it on the agenda and to make a referral. Asking for four nods or going through a written process that has a vote, you know, those are fine. That is, that is, that is one of the ways. And it is a perfectly valid way. It's a good tool. But it is one tool. It is one of the tools in our toolbox. You know, it is the hammer, right? But not everything is a nail. Not every community need is a nail. The hammer is not always the right tool to use. Sometimes, I don't need to come up here and get four nods and have it agendized and have a conversation. Sometimes, all I need to do is send an email to the city manager saying, hey, this fits in with our, you know, past priorities that the council has mentioned. We all know this is important. Could you just add this to one of the other work items? The answer's usually yes. If it's not, that's when maybe we have to use the referral item to make it a priority. But most of the time, one of the other 19 tools that we have work just fine and take a lot less time than having, you know, writing up a memo and having a conversation and getting the nods and then having it come back. That takes weeks and weeks. If I could just send an email and get it done, why wouldn't I? Why wouldn't we do that? And we do it all the time. We inundate the city manager with emails. I'm sure that's probably how she feels sometimes. And that's okay. It's good that we have lots of tools in our toolbox. It is a mistake, in my opinion, for any one of us to say, okay, I am always going to use just this one tool for everything. Right? And part of learning how to do this job is to learn about all the tools that we have available to us and to learn how to use them and then use the right tool for the job. I can hear my father saying that when I was a kid. Use the right tool for the job. Now, I had a conversation with our new colleague back in December. You'd asked, you know, a question about how I get stuff done and I'd offered to sit down and talk with you about the various different tools at our disposal. I made that offer to you, basically to talk about all the stuff in the toolbox. That was in December. I have never heard back from you. And I think I mention that because it seems to me that you found the hammer and you know how to use it, but I wonder if you're aware that there's all these other tools out there that you can use. Not everything is a nail. Right? We don't need to be having referrals, two or three referrals every week. You know, that's not the way that we should be doing that. Not through the four nods process, I mean. There's other ways to make referrals and we all do it. I would never, ever vote to stifle my ability to make suggestions, put out ideas and make referrals. That would be exactly wrong and I would never do that. But I know that even if the number of four nods referrals was limited, that I still got, you know, 19 other ways to get stuff done. And that's okay. We all go through this learning process when we come up here new. We all come to this job not knowing how to do it. It happened to me too, right? And we all, we all, we all have a choice. We try, you know, we try to move our ideas forward and eventually, we all get frustrated. We run into a wall and like, why isn't, why I'm not, am I not able to get this idea moved forward? And when that happens, we have a choice, right? Each one of us, and each one of us has gone through this process. We can either get mad and start blaming other people and go on social media and insult them in public and use anger and recrimination and blame other people for our failure to get things done. Or, we can talk to our colleagues. And thank goodness, when the choice was there for me years ago, I sat down with Councilmember Halliday this time and said, hey, why am I not able to get my ideas, you know, why am I not able to get the support for some of my ideas? And she talked about all the different ways to do that, all the different tools. And you were really helpful. You were, sorry, you were really helpful. And thank you for that. And it's part of what we all do for new council members. That's why I offered to have that conversation with you and I look forward to you taking me up on it someday. Anyway, I think that most of the concern that I'm hearing tonight is around, you know, the limit on the number of times it comes back. And, you know, that's fine, we can just eliminate that. I do kind of like the idea of having to submit these four nods things in writing. I used that, right? I used it, I think, three times last year. I did it verbally. But it wouldn't be a problem for me to do a one-page memo and, you know, put it on the agenda for the next council meeting. That's not limiting my ability to put out ideas. All that's doing is making sure that I am clear on what I'm asking for. And, you know, if you want to have a vote on it as a referral, I'm fine with that. I don't have a problem taking public positions. That's perfectly fine. And, you know, you're concerned about the four nods process, that it's not clear who nodded, yeah, that's a valid point. I don't have a problem with that. So, so, fine. Let's, let's, let's do a memo. Let's have it come back. Let's have a vote, decide on whether we want to have a further discussion. That's great.
I'm really going to ask for some quiet in the chambers while we discuss this issue. You all have had your say.
But I just.
And now, it is our turn to debate this issue. And I think we're trying to do that.
So, I just really hope.
Okay, we'll just have to talk over.
I just really hope that we can talk more and argue and insult less going forward. Because it's when we work together and collaborate that we are all. Let me, let me, I'm almost done. It's when we work together that we're all going to be able to get things done for the community. And I want to hear, I want to hear Ayesha's best ideas and Elisa's best ideas and I hope they'll listen to mine and then we can all work on them together. But we have to cooperate in order to do that.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Zermeño.
Okay, so, let's see. As my colleagues have also stated, I have agendized many times, but I have not referred any, any time. It's all been I agenda, which is one of the things that happens in our agenda package. It says referrals and future agenda items. And that's what I have done. And I've asked for four nods and it has happened. Let's see, one question for staff. If this were to pass, when does it become effective?
It's structured right now. If the council adopted a resolution with any modifications that you consider this evening, I've heard a couple suggestions for changes, it could go into effect immediately.
Immediately. So, then, beginning tomorrow, I have five nods for the rest of the year.
If you, if you chose to have the limit on the number of referrals, I think Councilmember Mendel suggested maybe getting rid of that provision. That's up for the discussion.
It was certainly stated that there would be, you know, the hands would be tied because five hundred years.
I mean, I would suggest that the policy has not been in effect to date, so it would be going into effect tonight. So, you would have three to five referrals for the balance of the year.
Okay. Let's see. So, as a city council, as city council folks, we meet yearly and we prioritize. We meet yearly and we set a budget. And in that budget, we tie it into our priorities. And that's when we agendize, so we refer, referring to our priorities. That's very, very important. And we are the governing body. We, what we prioritize, for example, one of the reasons that I got on the council was prioritizing Tennyson Corridor. And it now is a priority. Tennyson Corridor, South Hayward is a priority now. And that's very important. So, that's something that I push forth. Did I have a city manager tell me, no, you can't do that, Francisco? No. No. There was agreement in the city council that Tennyson Road, what needed to become a priority, staff said, that's the order, and that's what we're going to be doing. The process of a city council member thinking about a referral to improve our city, to Hayward On, is the guy who keeps yelling in the back over there, to make our city better, is a good one, because that memo will go to the infrastructure committee, and to the mayor. It's made up of three council members, and then in consultation with the city manager, then the decision will be made, let's go ahead with it. That means eventually, the four nods will come back in here, and then at that time, the governing body, us, will then direct staff and the city manager to do this. I agree with, with my colleague Lamnan. I'm not sure how this all became an anti-city manager episode. That's sad. I don't understand this. Questioning who runs the city, I mean, come on, the city is run by the city government. It's our charter. By the city council, not the manager. That is true, young man. All right, so, let's see. So this memo, this memo, okay, goes to the mayor, the city council, let's see. It is, it is then, the referrals being limited, that can be changed, that's no problem. Let's see. In my mind, we asked the city manager and the staff a couple of months ago to clarify, to make flexible, and to become transparent with this process, that we all, us seven up here, agreed that it needed to be done. No one said, no, no, we don't need it. No, we all agreed, it needs to be looked into. That's what they did, because that was their order from us. Okay, so it does clarify. Now, I read on social media something about progress being prohibited. Progress is not being prohibited from us coming up with a, with a process that will be to improve Hayward. I also read that the, that the process that is being proposed will not serve our community. How is this process of improving our city through this particular method not improving our community? It's illogical.
Francisco, just go on, and ignore the...
It requires approval from the council, and that council is us. And that's why I think that the process that we directed staff to do, because we are the governing body, is a good one. Let's see, I think that's all that hap-- 18 cities were studied, 18 cities were studied. I think that's very important. Also mentioned, let's see, nothing has changed. We're simply are normalizing a process to improve our city. Let's see. And I believe with my, I also am agreement with my colleague Mendel, in that there are many ways to improve our process and to refer. So, I think an excellent, and with that, I'd like to make a motion for, in favor of the, in favor of the city staff proposal.
Removing the full staff recommendation?
Yes, I am.
Is there, is there a second to the motion? If everyone can hear me, I apologize for the noise, but is there a second to the nomination?
Second if we can.
Yeah, okay. Well, there are some more council members who wish to discuss, so I think, so, okay, Councilmember Zermeño made a motion to move staff recommendation. Councilmember Lamnan is going to request...
So I would be willing to second that if we can add in the adjusted language that I put in the council questions, and, and I would suggest that we, we separate the limit question from the memo question.
Excellent, excellent.
Okay, thank you.
So, the motion and the questions, point that out to me.
Sure. So, this edit, and then this language about... Sorry. The language includes, the suggested changes include making sure that there's delineation between, so, correct me if I'm wrong, Councilmember Zermeño, but the motion is that, A, the report and referrals get separated, two, that the referrals process is as outlined with the memo, with the addition of a note to how this includes, how it connects with, if it does, the strategic initiatives, council initiatives, existing budget goals, and then that there's clarity in the ordinance or the handbook separating what would be a routine, fix my fence, access Hayward kind of thing versus these. And lastly, that some of these referrals are to the city attorney or to the city clerk, because those are also our appointed officers, and for instance, an elections question would go to the city clerk, and just to make sure that that's clear for councils.
The other one that needs to be included is that the memo should be directed to the infrastructure committee.
Or, so, whatever... So the question, right, if I could help with this. So you're right, there's no language in the existing proposal to say who it gets actually submitted to.
Who submitted, yeah.
So the memo on, the template would say to the mayor and council from Councilmember X, and then that memo would be given to me as city manager and the city clerk, and we would put that on the agenda, the, you know, based on that line of the process. And then, so basically, the memo goes to the entire mayor and city council, comes as a referral. In the memo, you would clarify and say, oh, I want to refer this to the infrastructure committee for discussion, and/or budget and finance, or, or have the whole council, yeah. And so, and then I, just to clarify the motion, I heard that you wanted to separate the discussion. I'm sorry, I'm, we're trying to finish the business and conduct this so everyone can, can conclude the conversation. So that we would basically separate that motion from the discussion about the number of referrals issue. So this, this would be the one process, and that's the motion, and then a second motion, or a second conversation about the number of referrals.
By the way, I am open to leaving out the number of requests. So if somebody wants to make a friendly amendment, by all means, I'm open to it. Well, I'm, I'm fine with it, but if somebody wants to friendly amendment, by all means, go for it.
So, well, that, well, did you want to do that?
No, I'm gonna...
The vote, when it comes to council for the discussion first time?
I'm sorry, say that again.
It's clear that it says in the council, in the, okay. I just wanted to clarify that there, that this does include a vote at the stage the memo first comes back to council, because it says that it will only move forward if there is a council majority, and the only way that you can determine that is by a vote. And I think it needs to be clear that it would be a recorded...
Correct, there would actually be a recorded vote.
Yeah, so that is in there already. Okay. All right, so, the motion is on the floor by Councilmember Zermeño, seconded by Councilmember Lamnan, and I think that Councilmember Salinas wants to speak.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I, it's been quite an evening, and I've been writing everything down, and I appreciate the family coming out, and I know, please hope, and, or, please know, not hope, but please know, our, our condolences are with you, our sympathies are with you, and please know that. I know, you know, we all hear, this is where it happens, this is where democracy happens, and this is a process. Democracy sometimes isn't easy, but I do have faith in it, and, you know, and like many of you, I was born in Hayward, I was raised in Hayward, and this is my home. I still live here. And, and I know we take all of these issues very seriously, and, and I do listen, I do, and please know that. I wanted to first make a few statements on, on some of the comments that were made earlier, and just kind of clarify some, some issues, because, you know, when I came in here this afternoon, particularly with this issue, I really didn't know where I was at on it. You know, I spent a lot of time thinking about it today, and I've been on the council since 2010. I had a two-year hiatus, but then I was re-elected in 16, and, and of course, I'm here today. And I, I want the community to know, to, you know, with their, to be, no mistake about it, the city manager works for us. We hire and we fire three employees, the city manager, the city clerk, and the city attorney. And, and I don't confuse those roles at all, and I have a great deal of respect for our city manager, I have a great deal of respect for our city attorney, and I have a great deal of respect for our city clerk, and, because that's what you elect me to do, right? And, so, I want to sort of, there's no role confusion here, so I really want to be clear about that and, and make that point. You know, conversely, I also want to make a point that hasn't been made tonight here, particularly with this item. Make no mistake about it, we are a political body, right? This is a political body, and, and make no mistake about that, right? And, you know, I, when I ran for reelection in 2016, it was a tough election. It was a tough election, right? It was a tough election. And with the exception of Councilmember Wahab, everybody on this dais campaigned against me. They campaigned hard against me, right? Hard against me, right? And then, in 16, or last year, when I, in a democratic process, when I challenged the mayor, right, the council, the majority of the council up here campaigned hard against me. Hard against me. And I wasn't successful, and that was fine. I took it in the chin, I got up, put my suit on, came back to the dais.
You gotta remember Gonzalez down there, the one for you.
And, so, and, and I agree with the statement that was made up here, that there are plenty of opportunities to make policy up here. There's plenty of opportunities to submit ideas. We have committees where I have, I personally have submitted ideas, and I've contributed to those committees. I have sometimes been unsuccessful, because I couldn't get the vote, or, like I said, we are a political body, and quite frankly, I may not have the attention of the two other council members in a committee. I have taken clear policy positions up here, where I have been the lone vote up here. The lone vote, right? And I've taken it in the chin, and I've gone home, but then I've come back, and I've put my best foot forward, and I tried it again. And so, there's council committees, there's council meetings that we can submit ideas, and we can put things in the policy, and to move things. There's things in the city today, form-based codes on Mission Boulevard, where I'm quite pleased that I was able to strike out future uses for tobacco stores and liquor stores along the Mission Boulevard corridor. I mean, I'm pretty proud, I'm pretty proud of that, right? I was the one that spoke up, and I was the one that got that through, and I'm pretty happy about that. And I'm also pretty happy that I've been the, I've been a champion up here in making sure all of our neighborhoods are healthy for kids and families. I'm pretty happy that, that I've been able to do that successfully. The general plan, I'm pretty happy that I've been, I'm pretty proud of the fact that I have successfully included a chapter seven in the general plan that talks about education. In the last 50 years of the general plan, we have never had a chapter on education. And it took me until I was elected in 2010, and then in 2011 and 12, I was able to get that in the general plan. And, and I was the lone voice on that for many, many versions of the general plan, and I was able to get it, I was able to get it done. And then we have policy retreats, where we come up with strategic initiatives, and then we have priority-setting retreats. All of these things we do, they're open to the public, everyone can provide input, and, and so those are more tools, or more spaces that people are, are encouraged to participate. We don't get a lot of participation, a lot of meetings, it is what it is. We do get participation when we have events like this, when situations like this come. And so, these spaces and these places where we can influence policy as council members, or I have been able to influence, even though the majority of the council up here has been very, very much against me, right? I've been able to get things on there. Are there problems with the system that we have currently, the status quo? Yes, absolutely, absolutely, right? When it comes to the four nods or the four votes, right, there's, there could be four people, right, who are friends, and who talk to one another, who hang out with one another, who campaign with one another, who endorse one another, who, that happens, it's politics. Remember, we are a political body, that's the politic, right? And so, there are problems with that, because when, when I was re-elected, it was made to me very clear up here on this David, on this dais, that I was going to be the lone one. It was very clear, right? And so, I say that because there are, there are problems with this process, but I don't think that the problems that we have need such drastic change, and such drastic reform, that we need to completely throw out a process that we've had, and, and with, with, with all respect to my colleague, we've had a, it's been a long time, right? In 83, I was 13 years old, by the way, right? And it's a, it's, it's a flawed process, but the process, I think, works. And, you know, halfway through testimony up here, I, I was thinking, you know, why don't we just keep the same process? And, now, I do like this submitting one, like a one-pager or a two-pager policy brief on something that we have. I like that, because it makes us work. If we want to pass an issue, then you know what, we have to do our homework, right? In policy, the first thing you do in public policy is you identify the problem, and you identify the scope of people impacted. We need to do our homework, and I like that idea, right? And so, I was ready, I was quite surprised, I thought it was going to go the other way, you know? I was ready to make a motion to just flat-out kill this, and, and let's go back to our process that we already have, and let's have, and let's work on it, and let's, I hope my colleagues on the other side of the dais are listening, perhaps jarred, because I think not only is this a significant sort of crescendo, but I think it's a moment where, where it's jarring us, and, and I, and I would rather continue with a process that we have, continue to fight vigorously, and thoroughly, tweak it. I don't mind a one- or two-page brief, I wouldn't mind doing that, whether it's in committee, whether it's up here, whether it's in a retreat. And so, I'm going to be voting no on this, and the reason why I'm going to be voting And the reason why I'm going to be voting no... is because, is because, you know, we need to work together up here. We just can't talk about it. I heard a lot of "we working together," and "we're colleagues," and "working together." Make no mistake about it. Make no mistake about it. We don't work together up here, right? We don't work together up here. And so, and so, I want to be very clear about that. Because what, what hasn't been said in here is that at the end of the day, we are a political body. And just for, just for conversation's sake, I'm the only guy up here, and I'm proud to say this, I'm the only guy up here that is up here with virtually no endorsements.
Yes!
Right? Right? So, so, and I know, I got, I have a, there's a good friend of mine sitting out in the audience, who's a school board trustee, Ken Rowden, who can say the same thing, who can sit up here and speak honestly, speak the truth, and, and, yeah, have courage and take risks. Because that's why you elected, that's why you elected me, at least, right? So, I'm going to be voting no on this. I hope it is rejected, and I hope that we have someone up here, if not me, a colleague up here, that will move to strike it, and we can return to business as usual. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Wahab. I'm sorry, you're next in line.
Okay, so, you know, I just want to clarify some things and drop some, you know, clarity and transparency. Councilmember Salinas, I do appreciate your words. I know that it's a very interesting six-page recommendation. Now, what was interesting is that I specifically stated, and it was said today, that the city manager drafted this particular recommendation. That is why she was brought up, right? The study, she stated, she did the work for it. She brought it together. That is the only reason why we brought this up in full clarity. There was no attacks, nothing like that, on my end. So, I really, really don't appreciate false claims. The other situation is that, yes, I did state that the city manager brought this, and, you know, if you read it, it's six pages, it's very wordy. That's how we like to do things. We are supposed to submit a one-pager, but, you know, we get these wordy staff reports. So, just to be very, very clear, the number-one problem that I definitely have is the arbitrary number of three to five referrals per year. Now, this is a violation of our constitution, and we can get a constitutional lawyer involved in this, who is really geared towards this. As, you know, there's, from what I understand, there's an equal protections clause in the United States Constitution that would also limit the council administration to only have three to five consent items, then. This is what I understood. And, you know, I'll just point-blank say a couple of things. This wasn't all bad. You know, I asked for transparency and a legitimate process, but this is not it. I asked specifically for a one-page memo, for it to be written down so everyone's aware of when I am asking for XYZ, or any other council members asking for XYZ, that we can put it in writing and just edit if need be. Now, you know, there is two parts of this. It stated that they're pulling out the council referral, or the council reports, which I'm fine with. The council reports to be a separate item, it just basically means that, hey, if we attended something that's intergovernmental, that is completely fine. You know, we make those every now and then. The council referral piece is the biggest concern I have, and I'll tell you why. Now, this is separated in two different parts, and it's very, very lengthy. And I will say, Part One, if anybody wants to follow along with me, Part One, Section A, is completely unnecessary because we meet with the city manager on a weekly basis. I am fully transparent, and I hope that my colleagues are fully transparent. And it says that it does not require policy direction from the council, and within current budgeted resources, it can take place. As, you know, one council member very condescendingly told me that I had 19 tools available to me. This is one of them. I've had conversations. In fact, you know, before I was even sworn in, I asked for respiratory masks to be given out to our homeless population, and it was done. No referral, no anything like that. So, things like that can happen. It's a smaller window, smaller projects. But for that big change that we want, a referral is needed. And I will say that even when I made a referral, even after discussing a little bit regarding the furloughed employees, the government employees, the United States government furloughed employees, where we can waive some of their late fees, I brought it up, and our city manager right then and there said, "We can take place, do this immediately. No action needed from council." But I brought it up during the referrals, just to see if everybody was supportive of it. So, Part One, Section A, is completely unnecessary. And this is feedback, if we're going to, you know, vote eventually. "We set policy and may change direction and redirect budget." Let's understand that. Budget is not set in stone. We can redirect budget, right? We know this. I'm on budget committee. We talk about budget all day, right? And we meet monthly, okay? We don't meet quarterly or anything else like all the other committees that are being suggested, just FYI. So, Section B of Part One, I'm fine with a one-page memo. In fact, I asked for a one-page written memo in previous meetings, and it's to describe the goal and the policy. You know, I also would like to add a timeline. Several other cities, and this part wasn't really clearly laid out, have a 30-day to 60-day return process. So, when I make a referral, and let's say it's studied or analyzed and workloads and things like that, 30 to 60 days, it can come back to council for a legitimate vote. Unlike my acceleration of minimum wage that's going to come in September, in summer, six months after I asked for it, right? So, those are the concerns I have with Section B. I want a one-pager, and I want a timeline attached to it. I also do not want to be handing this to, and I'll get to that in a minute. On Section C of Part One, no. Hundred percent no. To giving it to the city manager two weeks prior. You saw, those list of cities, they said "on the day of," right? So, why do I need to give it two weeks prior? And then the beautiful note, the second paragraph of Section C says, "Staff will devote no time preparing reports or analysis on the requested item." So, why do you need two weeks, right? "The limited staff assistance provided..." This is basically just a conversation, so I don't need to give it to you two weeks. I want to give it to you the day of. Maybe I woke up in the morning, and I said, "Look, I actually thought of a great idea. Let's do this." And I researched it for eight hours. Thirty hours, I mean, 30 workdays is 240 hours. Let's double that for 60 days, even. I think that's what we need to be talking about. So, I don't want this to be up to the city manager's discretion. And the reason why I bring up the city manager is because this consistently says bringing it back to city manager, right? Because we can't really talk to any other staff. If I want to talk to the director of the housing, and housing's my big pet project, I can't do it without the city manager available. Now, we are on a homeless task force, these three individuals, me included. And I will say, as a subcommittee member on a couple of other things, my toolbox, I love that we have this toolbox, I will say that on our budget meeting, we talked about, and I brought up, what if we had for our city employees a student loan forgiveness plan? Wouldn't that be nice? As a millennial, I think all of us would say yes, right? And the city manager who attends that told me, "You have to bring it back to referral on council. They cannot use city staff or talk about it in the subcommittee unless it's directed by all of council." So, right here, what is being described to you is a circle, right? They like to toss it to something else, so, as I was told when I was first elected, "Don't put us in a position where we're going to have to make a decision." Wow, right? And, you know, I will say, you know, I didn't really want to get into this, but there is a clique mentality. The reason why I bring it up is because I know, when I talk, and I have met with different council members, I have had the conversation on policy, I don't get any support. In fact, other council members told me, "Write down every single idea you have and give it to us so we can review it," right? That right there is a violation of the Brown Act, one. Number two is, do you guys not want to share your ideas with me? Right? So, where's my list? Been waiting for that. So, we can get into the weeds, and I'm happy to do so, but let's focus on this, this particular piece. Now, I really don't think that giving you two weeks does anything because we can't even get our weekly agenda packets before Friday, okay? You know, I'd like to review it maybe one more day and not spend my weekend on it, per se. Section D, the five referrals a year is a very arbitrary number. There is no study to back it, and I will tell you, those 18 cities don't have a limit. I can tell you that. So, no to that. I will also say, in Section D, the council priority retreat, I love that because it only happens once a year, right? And it's with all the other department heads. So, how can we really, in like four hours, four to eight hours that this is talked about, do we listen to all the county, I mean, the city department heads, and also seven members of council, and hear feedback? So, definitely not on D. And no to asking, one of the things that was written here that I found fascinating was that once a council member reaches their maximum number of five per year, that we are supposed to ask another colleague to bring in the referral. And, you know, to me, this is very, very interesting because I'm supposed to basically trust another colleague to bring in a referral that maybe I want, the way I want it to be written. And we know, we don't all share the same opinion. So, how can I ensure that? Completely ridiculous in that particular piece. So, definitely no to D. And I want the meeting minutes to reflect all of this. Now, if we can go to Part Two, which is the meat of it, I'm going to be honest with you, this is the council consideration of the council memo. So, Section A, I am completely fine with it. It's basically, an item is called at the council meeting, the referring council member describes the policy issue and wishes to place it on a future agenda. That's super simple. So, I just want to say that the 18 cities and all of their processes, where almost all the processes were added and given to us. It wasn't a simple memo vote. That's it. That's all we're asking for, right? This is just adding all the 18 processes from these, or the 18 cities' processes together. Section B, it needs to be further studied, but the memo wants more than a council member can drop an item at any time. So, if a council member can drop an item at any time, even after staff analysis, this is what it says, I would like to have that verbiage include a vote. I want to vote if we're going to drop an item. I want to vote on anything and everything that comes forth. "City manager fulfills the tasks from policy council pushes forward." Is that not how a city functions? It is not the other way around. And I want to say that every public comment stated this. Section C, no. I really am interested in this particular section because it says, "The majority of council needs to discuss an item." You know, one of those cities actually only needs one council member to bring up an item for discussion. Again, a referral is just for discussion. It is not, hundred percent not, a vote to support it or not. A referral can also be voted on by the entire council as, "We don't like it," or "We do like it," to move on to the agenda. What is the problem with just making this simple? So, a big fat no to the city manager to determine when to place the item on a future agenda item. So, C says that. So, am I going to have to wait for the city manager to find within a budget, and within her timeline and workload, and understanding all this, maybe three years? Maybe two years? There is no limitation, hence why I asked for a timeline of 30 to 60 days. I think that is incredibly reasonable. Do you guys agree? I agree, right? So, I'm open to 30 days from the introduction of the referral up to 60 days. But items need to return to council for a decision with a definitive and measurable timeline. Otherwise, we will be dealing with another timeline failure. You know, I'm not going to lie, have you guys seen that library open? A year late. And that, you know, I'll say that, I'm also going to say no to the city manager keeping a data of a log of referrals unless that is made available with each agenda packet, so we're all informed and not something behind the scenes. Again, I really love transparency in that. I believe the city has a poor track record of keeping data. You guys can ask for all the data you want regarding housing, regarding evictions, regarding, you name it. We don't really keep good track of data because of the way these policies are written. And I can reference the lack of transparency in this process, as well as the lack of data. Rental units, evictions, decontrol, mental health training, no data has clearly been provided in any of these areas. None. So, I want the, let the minutes reflect my position, and I hope that it was all captured. My desire is simple. To improve the referral process was to ensure accuracy, transparency, reliability, and accountability. After I experienced a manipulation of my clearly-stated referral for in-depth mental health training, I didn't understand and originally opposed this four-nods policy from the day I was sworn in. And I'm going to say, my orientation was not how, what tools you have. You know, this is something we're learning, right? It was literally just meeting department heads. That's it, okay? It didn't talk about referrals. In fact, that's why I found out about this four-nods policy. And I attempted to understand this unquestioned policy, and within a month, I saw the lack of transparency with this process and the manipulation due to the lack of a voting procedure. We can't even say who supported a referral. This four-nods policy is problematic, and I'm shocked at it being in place for years without question. So, all the years, nobody thought that this was a problem. I bring all my referrals to the public because that is my duty. This is why I ran. I genuinely still believe the government we have today is for the people, by the people, and of the people. The city charter doesn't even describe the referral process. And the city charter is like, let's say, the Holy Grail. The handbook can get changed anytime, any day. And instead, a handbook that serves as a guide. The drama over this referral process is interesting. A referral is a request to have something discussed, to have a majority have to bring an item up is probably a way to duck voting on an issue. If a council, or city council, doesn't like the discussion or motion, they can always vote no. We are not taking that power away. To me, this is a violation and a disservice to the voters of this city. It violates the Constitution, restricts speech, and the duties of the elected to serve the people and their interests. The arbitrary referral process described is/will make this council ineffective further. The equal protection clause in the Constitution would limit city administration from putting items on consent, just as we would put items on a referral. We can have a constitutional lawyer study this, and I'm very happy to have that done. I simply want an expedited, transparent, accurate, fair, and reliable process. I will not support backdoor conversations, which you have heard, almost everyone has said, "Yes, I've talked, you know, with the city manager. I was able to get this done," right? But what do we know what's being done, right? Has it been in an agenda item? No. So, this is how the city has been functioning, and I will not add three more, or 10 more, or 18 more steps when I want to do my job productively. I will not cap myself or any other council member to setting city priorities. I will not subject myself or city council to the whims... I will not subject myself or city council to the whims of the city manager, but prefer a reliable 30 to 60-day cycle to review the topics. Let me be clear, the city priorities are those that the city council makes through referrals. A one-page memo is all I'm asking for at any meeting. I don't need to give it to you ahead of time. A clear vote to agendize the item, and then a request of approval of subcommittee. And, you know, I find that very interesting because again, we can't do anything in these subcommittees. It has to come back. So, 30 to 60-day timeline to standardize this, and a vote. A legitimate vote in a transparent process. I'm not asking for much.
And I believe that much of what you are asking there is actually in this recommendation by the city manager, and you have actually acknowledged that. So, yes, thank you. And I think that the city manager did listen and bring back very much of what you said. And maybe some things you don't like, but that's what we're here tonight to do, to discuss. So, I'm gonna call on Councilmember Marquez now.
Thank you. So, I'm just, gotta state publicly, I'm just very disappointed. You know, our public deserves better from their elected officials. Time and resources are extremely valuable. We have council members that speak at length every meeting, want to control the narrative. With all due respect, Councilmember Wahab, you want every sentence, every word you stated correctly captured. I'm not worried about that because I'm certain you'll go on CBS News or your Twitter tantrums. It's really, really ineffective and reckless. No, it is. And I'm, let me finish. So, I will take it there because there are, no, no, I have the right to my opinion.
Please do not silence one of our council members. Please do not silence her.
No, let me explain.
Okay, who's silencing us?
So, I was elected to be fiscally responsive and responsive to the public. The comments that are made up here, which I will not disclose, I will tell you, they're a breach of confidentiality. There are violations occurring almost at every meeting, violations of closed-session discussions. This is a separate item that we have to deal with our colleagues, but clearly, this is about politics. This isn't about the best interests of the community, restricting democracy for the people, by the people. Someone who's all about the people, please tell me why, in their own candidate statement, they would urge you to give her her one and only vote? You have the right to two votes. Not only was that in her candidate statement, but publicly, she urged people to give her one vote so she would be the top vote getter, so that would ensure that she gets elected. And that's great. But do you understand, when you're dealing with that type of behavior and characteristics, that spills over? And I have the right to my opinion, I'm gonna speak on whatever. Yes, it is.
Please, please allow this council person, who was also duly elected, to speak.
It happens to us, so we have to defend ourselves, and we have to set the record straight. And I can almost guarantee.
Hey, I am sorry that you do not have the floor, and I would really like some courtesy in this chambers. I have never, in my, I have never experienced a time when people actually are trying to silence our members of council. So, I, we will, we will end this discussion now and continue it at another time if we can't have courtesy. Well, we can get it done with, you know, noise.
I'm stating facts, is what I'm stating, okay? And it's all documented publicly, all of you guys can pull it up, some of you.
We are not having a, councilmember Marquez has the floor.
My point in saying all of this is clearly, this is about politics. This isn't about governing, this isn't about serving the public. This is about individual people wanting to serve their own interests, push their agendas. We have many mechanisms to bring issues forward, to be effective, to get our referrals across. We've all demonstrated that. All of you might not agree on the things that we have accomplished in the last couple of years, but we have not been sitting up here silent, lazy, not accomplishing anything. And the fact that we've raised to the level to personally attack our city manager, our staff, is very, very disruptive. We're responsible for over 160,000 people, okay? I'm not bought by anyone, so. Pull it up, it's 460, it's a public record, pull it up. All of us up here stand by our votes, that's why it's transparent, that's why it's videotaped, okay? I know you guys are upset about other issues, and I completely acknowledge that, and we will deal with those issues. But what I'm saying tonight, what's occurring, is not about governance. It's about people's individual, personal agendas. And I am insulted, as a lifelong resident, as someone who plans to be in this community till the day I die. I already have my burial plot, I know exactly where I'm gonna be. And I'm upset that people are coming here, being disruptive, saying false information, and quite frankly, a liability to the city. So, mark my words, because I can guarantee we will see the truth come out very soon, and I'm gonna leave it at that.
Thank you, okay. We have a motion on the floor and a second. And I have heard one council member is voting against. I think Councilmember Wahab actually supports a great deal of the memo. I do think we may want a, I mean, a great deal of the recommendation. I think we may want a no, I think we may want to eliminate, I would like to offer a friendly amendment to eliminate the limit on the number of referrals. And we'll see how that works, and if it doesn't, then we can come back to that. Is that accepted by the maker and seconder, okay?
Let me just strike that paragraph.
Yes.
Strike.
Now, I will say, she also wanted the council to be the one that could drop the, and that is what the recommendation says, so I don't think we need a change there. It doesn't say member, it says the, it's, yes. In this, this discussion would all be had in public. And the reason for some time, now maybe two weeks, you know, the staff, as you said, the agenda packets come out a few days, they come out on Friday before the Tuesday meeting. And to get on that agenda, they need to know a day or so earlier as they're finalizing the report. So, that is why some lead time, if you make, I think perhaps one week is sufficient if it's, you know, if it's in a.
It was that it was verbally, if you saw several of the cities said verbally the day of.
They didn't have a written memo, and so there's.
We could write that memo in hand, it's the thing.
But we couldn't discuss it if it wasn't agendized, and that is the problem. Because what really brought this to the front was the allegation of Brown Act violation. When this, when, what was it that was being discussed that night? It was, it was a referral by Councilmember Marquez about the urgency ordinance on the no-cause evictions. She brought that forward, and it did get the nods. And then, I think you wanted to add to that, and there ensued a long discussion, and that's what, where we run into. Our city attorney feels that we didn't actually violate the Brown Act. I don't know, I mean, there are people who think we, and I, that was the night I was not here. But I think that that is why we were concerned, that we want to make sure that, because there were, it was a discussion that I think was legitimate, except that it wasn't agendized, and we have to follow those rules. So, if we want to have, I think it's a good idea. You have said you agreed to the one-page memo. I think that's, you know, that's in the recommendation. But if council members wanted to then say to you, you know, "Well, I don't quite understand what you meant by this section, or do you mean, or could I add this," or something like that, that is not allowed unless we have actually put it on an agenda. So, I think that is what the city manager was trying to accommodate, that we could have the kind of discussion that the council seemed to be wanting to have that night without making everybody nervous about violating the Brown Act. We aren't allowed to talk to each other more than, I mean, we have limits on how we can talk. And we really try very hard to follow those, all of us. But, you know, we are trying to make policy. I will say that the, I think we will take the limit on the number out, but I think what all of us, especially those of us who have been around and who understand, the number of referrals made every single day by all of us is enormous, really. The number of referrals we get from our constituents, the public, who then, you know, want to have something taken care of, we pass all that along. We want the city staff to have the time to address those things that are brought to us by the public. And they can't, and so we have to respect, and the city manager does have the power under our charter. She does clearly have a power under our charter. That is the law of the city, to determine, to direct staff to work on what council has directed her to do. So, she has a strong role to play in this, and she has to manage those staff resources. And if we, and that's what we all recognize when we have willingly agreed to wait a little while before our plan that we were so excited about and wanted to have worked on, is we bring it up. We realize that we have to kind of wait in line sometimes while the referrals that have been made in the past, or those daily requests that are coming in from the public get attended to. We absolutely want to serve the public. I think there's more agreement than disagreement right here, right now, on this matter. And so, I think Councilmember Wahab, I mean, definitely, the request that we take out the limit on the number of referrals, I don't, I'm not quite sure, you didn't want the log, but the log, or you wanted the log to be made public. You wanted a public vote, which is definitely in the recommendation, that it would be, it would move on if there is a majority of council. That implies that there would be a vote, and that it will be recorded by the city clerk. And that was a good suggestion. So, other than, other than the limit on the number of referrals, which we have now removed, is there, I'll give you one more, I mean, did you want to comment?
So, part one, section A, it was unnecessary considering that they're not doing any work to that. Part B, the one-page memo to describe the goal and the policy request, the day of any meeting, I'm completely fine with that, attaching a 30 to 60-day turnaround.
Okay.
Part C, no. Part D, no.
This is on part two?
This is part one.
Well, C has to do with the time necessary for the staff to get the matter on an agenda.
And I just, I just want to clarify, if the memo is not in the packet 72 hours before the meeting, the council can't discuss it. So, that is legally required. You cannot, if, unless the council doesn't have any discussion about it, and you can't technically put something on the agenda the day of. So, whether it's, I mean, two weeks was our, that's when our city staff have to submit their staff reports for review. But if the council wants to do it one week before, the Wednesday before the council meeting, we're flexible on that, but it has to be in the agenda packet when it goes out in order for the council to discuss it. That is the Brown Act.
So, a one-week turnaround at that point would be possible for you. And so, I'll also offer an amendment that we make it a one week rather than two weeks. Or, and sometimes it is going to be two weeks because if it's offered on the night of a council meeting where we're not actually having a council member, a council meeting the next week, it would end up being two weeks. But, so I think as, the next council meeting would be the rule. So, is that also? Okay, and by the seconder?
One week or the Thursday that her other department heads give it to her, their pieces?
All the staff submit their reports two weeks in advance. It takes time to go through, the finance department reviews it, city attorney's office reviews it. It gets to me by Wednesday or Thursday, and I have to turn all of the staff reports for the council packet around in 24 hours. And sometimes, I push items off the agenda because they're not ready to go. So, they don't get submitted on Wednesday.
I think that giving it on Thursday would not be, I mean, I think it should be one week, at least one week, or, you know, prior to the next council meeting, and then.
However, this is a referral, this is not a study, this is not, it's a one-sentence almost.
There's a lot that goes into the making of the agendas, and I think that giving them at least one week, at least one week, and in cases where, you know, if it's submitted on a Thursday, that would put it to the following council meeting.
Will the timeline be attached to this?
I have offered that as an amendment, and then.
Mayor, if I may, one thing that could happen is we can do this experimentally for six months and see how it works. And at that time, we can come back, with staff can come in and say, "This has worked, this is not, can we try a modification?" We will then have an idea.
All right, so you're suggesting a six-month limit to then review the policy?
Actually, can I suggest that we already have the, if I may, the ad hoc committee that's gonna be looking at our council handbook over the course of the next, I don't know, six to nine months? And so, I think that it would be logical to ask that group to review the policy after it's been enacted for a while. So, it's just sort of, it's gonna happen naturally, is sort of my point. And we'll have a chance to modify it then when the entire council will be considering action on, you know, a group of modifications to the.
Because it sounds like there may be quite a few modifications to what we have presently today. So, instead of doing this, it could happen at the committee level.
So, I'm sorry, what are you suggesting that we?
So, it sounds like we may have too many changes, modifications to what is presented today. We've already made four modifications. So, if we pass what we have with the modifications made by my colleague Lambon and by you, then we allow to work for six months, and then the committee will look at it. And then, of course, as we make referrals, we can see if it's working or not.
And maybe have it just come back in six months for review.
Absolutely.
Like I said, the entire handbook is gonna be coming back in about six months for review. And so, this will come back as part of that.
Yes, okay, I understand.
So, it's happening automatically.
Okay, is that, all right. And, you know, I will just say, this has been a good discussion, and I think that we are, you know, we are taking a policy that has been longstanding, making it a little more clear. Yeah, I agree, I've had my questions about the way we do this for a long time. It was, it was kind of that way informally when I came on council, and I do believe at some point it was clarified, the process was clarified in the council handbook, so there you have it. It was a longstanding practice. There are a lot of things in the charter. And as I said, the charter does give the city manager very specific powers and responsibilities, although it is a bit outdated because the city charter continually refers to the city manager as he. And of course, that is not the case, nor has it been for quite a while, even before the current city manager. So, at some point, we will be, we will be bringing to the voters charter amendments to kind of update some of the very outdated parts of our charter, and perhaps some more important issues in that. But that's something, that is going to take a lot of work, and so it has to be worked in. As I said, overall, the reason to have policies like this is truly for us to be able to serve the public that we hear from constantly in a lot of ways. These days, it seems mostly email, but in other ways too. Often, we make referrals to the city, to the city staff right here at council when someone brings up something at the dais. So, as I, as has been noted, there are very many ways for things to get referred and sometimes taken care of without the need for the council to develop a new policy and vote on it, sometimes with that need. And those are the instances where we need to make sure that we are not overburdening our staff with things and taking them away. Because underlying all of the new stuff that we may want to do, the basic goals of this council are, that we have kind of simplified into one word title, safe, clean, and green. Safe, public safety with, you know, our, and maintenance of our facilities has to be done every day. The public is served by the staff that work in those departments that provide those services. And so, that is a. And, and so that is a big load in and of itself. Then on top of that, there are requests that come in from the public that we do wanna have addressed. So we do have to limit ourselves as a council, even at meetings like this. Now, we have had the third, post-midnight, probably, meeting that we've had in the, since the beginning of this year, and that rarely happened before. But, but we have had, I mean, we have limited time at council meetings, we have public who wanna speak at these council meetings. So all of that has gone into consideration of this. So with that, we do have a motion on the floor.
What about the timeline?
The time, oh, the timeline of 30 to 60, yeah, I'm, I'm not gonna recommend that that come out, because the city manager has, has to, has to prioritize work. And I think that she, she usually tries to meet those...
Actually, on that, if I, so doesn't the, doesn't the draft memo include a proposed timeline?
It does.
So the person proposing it could propose a timeline. And so we could say 30 to 60 days, and the rest of the council can agree or not on that and designate, instruct the city manager accordingly.
The language states that the city manager will decide herself when it returns to the agenda.
Well, we have often, we have often directed the city council, the city manager, to bring stuff back to us in a certain amount of time. So I think that we will, that that will be, you know, instead of the way it is written here, it will be the memo, you know, the memo can include a timeline.
And the 30 to 60 days is in Section 2.
So the, what I think the discussion, so the, then there's a conversation that can happen, and we can just add a sentence in there that says, you know, "Upon the concurrence of a majority of council, that the item should be researched in place on a council agenda. The council can discuss the proposed timeline put forward by the referring council member in concurrence with the city manager, or in consultation with the city manager on staff resource impacts."
And the need, and, yes, and the amount of time needed to, because we do pay a lot of attention to the public, and so when we have new policies, we often have a lot of staff time, staff and ourselves out there, holding meetings with constituents and with, you know, I'm losing the word right now, people who have interests, particularly, and as in the recent case, the tenant community, the landlord community.
If I may, just following up on that.
Sure.
That was a suggested amendment by the city manager, which I think is good, that addresses, I hope, the request for a timeline.
Not completely. I'll be honest with you, I'm gonna vote no regardless, primarily because there's, there's too many holes in this, in both Part 1 and Part 2, period.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm still gonna try and make the motion better. So, so if the maker and the seconder are willing to accept that, that language change that the city manager proposed? Yeah, basically, the city council can dictate a timeline when they make the referral.
Okay, yeah.
That's logical.
And underscoring, yeah, underscoring that it is the maker, the person who submits the memo says, "I'd like to see this within," you know, some things are not as urgent. "I'd like us to consider it within the next year." Some things are, "It's gotta be done in the, in the next 15 days." And that the, the person in their research could make that case, and then the council can make that decision. And there's always input from city staff, but ultimately, the decision is ours. Thank you.
So that's a lot. We have, we have made a lot of amendments to this original motion. Maybe, I don't know...
No, no, can I, I'm gonna call the question and ask for a vote. I think it's...
Does the city, the staff feel that we have captured? Or you can look at the film, the video. All right.
Mayor Halliday, for the benefit of the public and the record, if we could clarify the motion.
Why don't I try to summarize what I heard, and then you guys can, can clarify.
Okay.
Sure.
What I heard was that the process would require, that it would follow the process, the council referral memo would be submitted one week prior to the meeting, one week prior, one week, one week prior to the meeting, that there's no limit on the number of referrals that a council member can make. That in terms of a timeline, the council referral memo will include a recommended timeline from the referring council member. The council will then discuss that when the referral comes up for conversation at the council meeting, and discuss the proposed timeline, and if there's any necessary changes to that timeline. That there will be a formal vote on the referral memo that is documented. Similarly, if the council decides that they don't wanna study a matter further, there would be a formal vote to drop the consideration of a matter at some point. And that the log of the referrals would be made available with the agenda packet, so that we could track those, the referrals, on an ongoing basis and make that public. Either with the agenda packet or in some other public way where people can look at them.
Yeah, maybe a quarterly report or a monthly report or something, yeah.
One more. It needs to be submitted to mayor and...
So the memo would be addressed to the mayor and council from the referring council member. It would be submitted to the city manager and the city clerk one week prior, so that we could put it on the agenda.
And to the mayor.
And the mayor can get a copy as well. Correct.
Good, okay.
And there were some textual changes.
Yes. And then the, the other text changes was that, that there's inclusion of the city attorney and city clerk in referrals, for those referrals that reflect, or have an impact on issues that are under their purview. And that the, this process is for policy items that require council consideration. It's not intended for routine governmental operation matters or items that may be handled through Access Hayward.
Thank you. And I, we didn't actually do the maker and the second approval on the one week, but it sounds like there's consensus for that. So, and I'm seeing Francisco nod, but can we just be really clear, what day are we talking about? Are we talking about the Tuesday before?
Tuesday, the Tuesday before the Tuesday council meeting.
Okay, by the close of business?
Tuesday.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure we knew what we're talking about.
Or if the referral is made a little bit later, then it's the next, it's one week, and then the council meeting that follows that.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
I mean, it could be made on Thursday.
I'll call the question again and ask for a vote.
All right, okay. We are, are we ready? I think we are ready to vote. And the motion passes with seven, with five "aye" votes and two "no" votes. And with that, we will move on to Madam City Manager. Do you have any further comments?
I do, have a couple of comments I just wanted to share. For those who aren't aware, our police chief, Mark Kohler, announced his retirement effective July 1st.
What's the coincidence?
Excuse me, I would like to finish making my comment. What I have, I announced this last week to the council, that we are gonna be doing an open and competitive recruitment for that position. I will be asking for community input into what they will be, what, what the community is interested in seeing in their new police chief. And we'll be conducting a community survey around that, and hope that folks will either feel free to participate and provide that feedback as part of that survey, or to email me directly. So that process will probably begin in the next couple of weeks, so I wanted to alert everyone to that, that information. The second announcement I wanted to make is, following up from the council's discussion on housing and rent stabilization, we will be having the task force meeting on Thursday evening on March 21st. And then on Saturday, April 6th, per conversations from the council, we will be holding a workshop from 9:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. to have a forum for stakeholders on the rent stabilization ordinance changes, to provide input to the task force and to the full council on the policy direction and, and conversation. So I just wanted, we, it will be, we're looking for a location, we haven't secured one yet, we're hoping to do it not at City Hall, but maybe out in the community. And so we'll be looking to have that conversation, and we'll actually be having discussion tables about the various topics that were brought forward during the February work session on rent stabilization. So the binding arbitration program, the standards of review for rent increases, possible elimination of the vacancy decontrol provisions, processes for filing rent increase and evictions, relocation programs, and tenant retaliation protections. So all of those will be sort of individual stations where community members and stakeholders can provide input on those policies. And that is Saturday, April 6th, from 9:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m., and we'll publicize that.
Thank you. Councilmember Marquez.
Thank you, Mayor. City manager, I just wanted to ask for clarification, because when we had this discussion on, I believe it was March 5th, I had asked to, I was basically concerned about the committee meeting at 5:00 p.m., so staff had suggested doing a Saturday meeting. So now that that is going to take place on April 6th, my question is, the April 6th and tomorrow's meeting, are those meetings gonna be televised for those that can't actually attend, if they wanna look back at the video and find out?
So they will be video recorded? They will not be live streamed?
Correct. But they'll be available after?
They will, they will be available after, on the city's website, and so folks can watch the videos. The workshop, we probably won't videotape that one, because it's gonna be smaller working groups, it's not gonna be a staff presentation or, or any sort of presentation. But the task force meetings will definitely be recorded, so folks can watch those meetings.
Okay. And then will we be doing a press release once we have that information to the public?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you for the comments. And we will move on to now council, yes, council reports, referrals, future attend items, maybe the last time that will be on our agenda as it is. Anyone?
I'm sorry. I didn't have a second.
Well, but would you like to make a comment? Go ahead.
I just wanted to ask the city manager to, the next time you meet with the directors, the executive team, to give a big thanks to our maintenance director. Last few days, I have been rather busy on Access Hayward. And I'm, you know, I'm, I know I'm walking a fine line. I hope they continue to, you know, keep my emails and, and not reject them, but they, in a very brief time turnaround, I get the replies that they're on it, it's clean and all that. So please, I know those guys are out there working their, you know, their trucks off. And so just thank, thank them very much. I know they're out there, you know, and Tennyson looks great, the median out there looks great. So I know those guys do, do a lot of great work out there. Rain or shine, they're out there. Thank you.
Councilmember, well, actually, Councilmember Sardanio.
Two quick things. March 11th was Hayward's 143rd birthday, so we will celebrate it with cake at the Latino Business Roundtable this Friday at 8:30. So drop by Bart, Bart's Pavilion, Shimon Bart's Pavilion, St. Rose Hospital. And then this past Saturday, a couple of us helped the Hayward's Landscape Department do some beautifying work at Portuguese Park. So it really looks very nice. So we planted carnations, which is a Hayward's flower, and also very important in Portuguese history. So, thank you.
Thank you. Birthday, birthday cake, huh? Birthday cake?
Oh, yes.
Good. This Friday. All right, thank you. Councilmember Marquez.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank my colleague, Councilmember Sardanio. I've seen pictures of you out on Whitman Avenue with students from East Bay cleaning up, and then also Portuguese Park. So thank you for your leadership in going the extra mile. I do wanna make a couple announcements. East Bay Clean Energy is gonna be holding a meeting on Thursday, March 28th, at the Matt Humana's Community Center. This is understanding your bill. It's gonna be scheduled from 5:30 to 6:30 is the English presentation, and then from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m., we will have a Spanish presentation. So we'll be sure to forward that information once the press release and flyer is available. But just want the public to know it is Thursday, March 28th, in South Hayward, Matt Humana's Community Center. And then also invite the public, on Saturday, March 30th, we're gonna be celebrating Cesar Chavez's birthday. La Alianza, a local nonprofit, has been doing that event for decades, and it's gonna be outside of City Hall Plaza from 10, I'm sorry, from 11 a.m. to 1 p.m. So please come and join us in honor the life and work of Cesar Chavez. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will now move on to our German. And I know that we were all sickened by the news last Friday of what happened in Christchurch, New Zealand, with the attack on two mosques. Fifty people lost their lives, many others were injured. And so tonight, I would like to, first of all, note that our city shares the grief with the rest of the world for what happened there. And we all adjourn this meeting in honor and memory of those who lost their lives last week in that horrible occurrence. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.